Good afternoon, welcome to City Council meeting for May 24th, 2022. Items listed on the agenda may be taken out of order. Two or more agenda items for consideration may be combined. And any item on the agenda may be removed, or related discussion may be delayed at any time. I'll call the meeting to order. Madam City Clerk, do we have confirmation of the agenda posting in the roll call?
Yes, the agenda was posted in accordance with open meeting law, and all members of council are present.
Thank you. We have Chaplain Michael Thrower here for our invocation. If everyone would rise, please.
Please bow your head in prayer. God, just thank you for this opportunity to be able to present the invocation this evening. I just ask that you just guide the words, guide the thoughts, and guide the understanding of those that will be leading this meeting. And ask to just give everyone a humble heart this afternoon, and help everyone to understand the things they need to do, or need to say, that they come in a humble way, and that they are loving and caring in their thoughts, and then their talks. But again, thank you for those that are making decisions that are for the betterment of this community. Allow them to continue to serve in a way that helps everyone be on one accord. And ask to just look over those that continue to serve our community every day, whether they be officers, or city council members, or just those that are in the community. These in all blessings, we thank you, and we love you. Amen.
Thank you, Chaplain. We'll have the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, and I believe we do have at least one public announcement. Mr. Fann? If you'd please state your name.
My name is Glenn Fann. Good evening, Mayor, council members, city staff, and all the residents of Boulder City. Just a reminder, Memorial Day is coming up this coming weekend, and as tradition has, the American Legion here in Boulder City, on Saturday before, we put out flags at the city cemetery. So if you wanted to come out and do something kind of, I don't want to say fun, but something to do, to honor our vets and stuff like that, come out Saturday morning to the city cemetery about nine o'clock. We got about 400 flags that we place out at the city cemetery for the veterans from all the wars and since before Boulder City. So if you want to come out and help, we appreciate the help. And also on Monday at three o'clock, we'll need a few people to come help pick up all the flags and stuff like that. So hope to see you on Saturday morning. Thank you.
Thank you. I believe that's the only public announcement we have this evening. So we will open our initial public comment period. As stated in the posted agenda for this meeting, public comment may have been submitted via email prior to the meeting. Public comment during this initial period is limited to matters on the agenda for action. Each person wishing to speak during the public comment period will have up to five minutes. And as always, we ask that you be civil and concise in your comments. Is there anyone in chambers that would like to speak during the initial public comment? Ms. DeShane? Please come forward and state your name.
I would like to comment on item seven, which is the budget, and item eight, which is historic preservation, code updates or ordinance updates. I would like to see those two switched, because if it isn't going to be a positive outcome for historic preservation ordinance, I mean, if it's all going to go back to, oh, we're going to study it some more, and that's going to be it, I think the budget, the $200,000, $100,000 for commercial and $100,000 for residence, that needs to come out of the budget, because I can't see any reason to put $200,000 towards historic preservation if this council, or the majority of this council, does not do something about an ordinance upgrade that's actually going to help and preserve it, because according to the package, about half of our historic preservation homes have disappeared as far as being part of the proposal in the last 40 years, 83 to 2021, I believe, or 20 when they did, when North Wind did it. So I think the $200,000 ought to come out of the budget if we aren't going to do something positive on that ordinance. And then item nine, that has to do with the concession out at Bootleg Canyon. From what I read in the staff report, downloaded and read, I really question whether we should continue extending that if the concessionaire has not done what they were supposed to have done over the last 15 years. It seems rather ridiculous to give them an extension. Maybe we can find someone better to run the concessions out there. And item 10 on the airport leases, I would think we could take a look, and I agree with having it evaluated, but I am not in favor of extending those leases any beyond what they've had. They've already had 30 years, like the one a couple of years ago. Those were canceled, these should also be canceled when they run out. And thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else wishing to speak in the initial public comment? You started to get up first.
Senator Hank? Kurt Goodfellow. Been a pilot for 40 years. I've been on the Airport Advisory Committee for many years now. I don't know how many, but it's been a lot, probably more than six, seven. And I guess my main concern about these hangar lease issues is, you know, it seems like Boulder City seems to be pretty concerned about listening to their committees. We've got a lot of committees in this town that assist you in making your decisions, but it seems like the Airport Advisory Committee has not listened to, it's not heard. We have a full committee. We haven't had a meeting to discuss this. This has not been brought up in any kind of meeting with us. And I think I'm the only one on the committee that owns a hangar, so the others should, you know, their expertise, and you guys appointed them for a reason, and it seems like their expertise, along with mine, having been in this industry for so long, ought to come into play here. And so I think that, you know, putting this on the agenda and starting on this right now without running it by the AAC, when we certainly could have had meetings, but the meetings have been vacated. We were never informed of this until just a couple of days ago. I just think that's an item of great concern. I don't know why you would do that. I don't know why you don't seem to care too much about what the users of the airport think. And so I'm concerned about that, and I believe that this ought to at least be put off until the AAC has had a chance to review it. Thank you.
Thank you. Sir, you had a public comment? Please state your name.
My name is Michael Copeland. I'm here for specifically one reason, but going over the agenda, there's something else. I'd like to talk about agenda item number nine. I actually did, used to work for Flatlines Bootleg Canyon. As many good things as I could say about Bryna Marcus, who was the manager of that company, she did an amazing job managing what she could. If I had any say in it, being a former employee, I would say do not renew your lease agreement with Greenheart, find somebody else. Bryna does an amazing job of managing it. If she can manage another company to be able to come in and do something with it, it would be amazing, but her hands were tied with what she was able to do with that company. So that's my two bits on that. The other reason why I'm here is to, and I understand, speak on the softball situation, the dog park. And if you look around, you'll see that there's a bunch of other people here that are also here to speak on this. So I'm asking that if you'd give the opportunity to allow us to speak on that.
If you wish to speak to it regarding what's in our budget, I believe that you can go ahead with that. But as far as the actual use of the field, that's not specifically on our agenda, but certainly there are budget matters that costs involve, you would be able to speak on that issue.
Okay. Well, if I may, then. Oh, then I'll have to edit this quite a bit, then.
That's okay.
I was born and raised in Boulder City. I grew up playing baseball on King Field, as well as also on Bravo Field. Both of those fields are very subpar. Bravo Field is much better now, because the high school's taking it over. But I grew up playing on a very small field, not very conducive to activities. And then the Veterans Park came in. I actually was the Eagle Scout that built all of the stands at Veterans Field. So it's very near and dear to my heart. This is very close to my heart. I now have children that play in these fields. As far as it goes for budgetary means, I think that there's a far better different options. I understand that you guys can see a field, and it's grass, it's sprinkled, it's fenced, awesome. There's other parks that are being able to be used. Oasis Park is an amazing option, in my opinion. It's centrally located within the city, it's a very large park, it's already sprinkled, there's trees for shading, you don't have to put any structures up other than fencing. I feel that that's going to be a much better option, other than to put our girls on the back burner and take away a little league field away from them. As far as it goes for other budgetary means, little league fields, they also require you to change the base length and also the pitching length. So either Bravo Field and also the Hemingway Fields, although those are softball fields, they're not at mandatory or regulation lengths for when it comes to bases and also for pitching distances. So there's going to be incurred costs as well for us to be able to change the lengths for our children to be able to safely play within regulations, for them to be able to pitch and also run those bases. Let our kids have their softball field. Let's find someplace else that's more conducive and easier for them.
Thank you. Anyone else wishing to speak? Yes, sir. Mr. Reagan?
Good afternoon, Matt Reagan. I was on the Airport Advisory Committee for several years, and when I got on it and I was selected to the chairman of the committee, I had heard about the city taking over the fuel farm. So the first thing that I thought was a priority is to see, and I wanted data to determine if it was a good idea for the city to get into the fuel business. And once the city got into the fuel business, was it a worthwhile investment? Now, the only way to determine that it was either a good investment, or a bad investment, or should the city even be in the business of a retail side of the fuel, was to request a profit and loss statement. So that was my first goal. Well, it just couldn't be done. The city doesn't work like a business. Now, where I've got my experience, I ran a, a family friends managed his apartments, and we had about 50 doors every month.
Sir, excuse me, Mr. Reagan, is this in regard to which item on the agenda?
The hangars.
Okay. Could you have your comments directed towards the hangars?
Well, that's what I'm setting up right now.
All right.
If I could, I could get that time back.
You may have the time back.
Thank you, sir. So as, what was important is to establish some sort of profit and losses. Now, clearly, in that package, I've never seen any profit and losses. I've never seen anything from the city to apply that, because you all, you five, will be deciding whether to take over these hangars. Was this a good deal? What are the liabilities? Not only what were the liabilities, what are your costs? And what were the public works, and how much they have spent as far as labor-wise? Has this been wise for the city? Now, my position would be the same, whether, whatever the city takes over, whether it would be Cascada, whether it would be, whether they're going to take over solar farms, should the city be getting into, and can it efficiently run something as efficient as Plan A, or B, or C, or D? And in that package, and anything that's been promoted, or presented to you all, I've, so far, I've never seen that. Now, the best place, which Kurt Goodfellow had mentioned, the best place to put this before is the Airport Advisory Committee. I think you'll find, if you actually run the numbers of the fuel farm, going back to that, the fuel farm has been a horrible thing for the city to get into. It hasn't made any money, the projected income has never materialized, and the flowage, and now it's just a long-term liability to the city. So it was a bad decision then, and likewise, it is, it's going to cost the city a significant amount of money. And so let's not keep making the same mistake over again. Let's determine what the value is, what the, it can be, income, and revisit these issues so that we can say is, let's, just because we make one decision that was bad, let's don't continually make these bad decisions. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else wishing to speak? Yes, sir. Please state your name.
My name is Chuck Haraway, and I'd like to have, on number eight, it says, "The possible action City Council direction regarding possible changes to the historic preservation ordinance." What is, what are the changes?
They are included in our packet.
Well, evidently I don't have the packet, so if I can, I'll just make some quick comments and move on. My family moved here in 64, the latter part of 64, and it was a family of two, and we've been very pleased with Boulder City. Boulder City has a strong history. It has significance not only locally, in the history of the state. What a wonderful thing, for residents, new and old, along with tourists, to experience the history of this town, not just to read about it, but to see it, feel it, and to smell it. So we have several buildings in town. The Grace Community Church, for example, was built in 1931 by the construction men. You have the movie theater, that's an old building, century-hab beautifully. City Hall, and incidentally, you people are sitting in my seat up there, because I taught in this, I was a school teacher here, and this was one of my classrooms. Sure was nice to have a big room like this. Even the Backstop Pub, I think, was here in 64, 65. You had sand dunes, and just stuff like this that needs to be preserved. We had an old, the old railroad terminal was here at one time, and then it was moved to Henderson, to a museum on Boulder Highway. And I don't know what happened to that museum. I think a lot of this stuff has been moved. And in that museum, there was an older building. It was very, very nice to go into it and get the feel of what people felt when they lived in something like that back in the '30s. I was one of the original, not designers, but original committee members when we put the museum in the hotel. And it was put there so that we could preserve some of that feeling of Boulder City as it was back in the '30s. So I guess my point here is that I'm hoping that we will watch and be careful of the things that, that we establish as history, and try to keep those things. Now, just, if you were to take, for example, a little bit of time, and go into the Boulder City Hotel, and sit down there, and just, it's so quiet, it feels good, and you get a general idea of what it's like to go into a room or a building that has historical significance. And so we want to preserve those things. One thing, we've got the water plant out here, that I think eventually is going to be rehabbed, hopefully, not be sold to a private person, but will be rehabbed and will be part of our historical community. Thank you very much.
Thank you. And my fifth grade classroom was across the hall, but I was here as well. Anyone else wishing to speak? In the back?
My name is Catherine Bruning, and I'm here to address eight. We live in a historic district, and my main agenda is to try and preserve the residential area. We have tourists that drive up and down our street, we live on Cherry, and the new laws or new entertaining of putting in rocks and desert landscaping is happening in this historic residential area. And I would like to see that discouraged as opposed to promoted just for money, or I think that, I know that grass takes more water, but it's necessary, it's part of the history. Our ancestors didn't bring in rocks, they could have, they could have left it dirt and sand, but they didn't. Let's preserve it. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, seeing no one else in chambers, we will open up the phone line. Anyone wishing to call in? The phone number 702-589-9629. Again, this is our initial public comment period for the City Council meeting, the phone number 702-589-9629. Anyone wishing to call in? Madam City Clerk, do we have any emails for the initial public comment period?
Yes.
Please go ahead.
First one is from Bethany Caruso. Mayor and City Council members, I am respectfully requesting that we suspend leasing more desert lands to solar companies. It's not just an appearance request, although that does play a partial role. I am requesting this because of the level of the dust that has exponentially increased with wind blowing across the desert into Boulder City this spring. I believe we might also need to be aware of asbestos being stirred up with all of this land movement. Additionally, the solar panels are increasing the temperature in Boulder City as we continue to add them to the open land and absorb the heat. It's not always wise to overuse space just because we have it available. We need to look at the funds needed for our city, and whether or not this is absolutely necessary. We have been committing long-term leases to companies that may not even be operational for the duration of the lease. It's putting a burden on the next generation to maintain or clean up if they do not go as planned. See the solar farm on the I-15 at Primm, for an example of a failed solar project. One of the solar sections is not working, and nothing is being done. The desert is closed off permanently, and the broken panels sit there in waste. The land is useful as it sits, even if it isn't monetized. It preserves our history and provides a much-needed home for many of our desert creatures that have no place over the hill, keeps us cooler at night, provides positive mental health to those who appreciate its beauty, and better physical health as the ground lay undisturbed. Thank you for the consideration. Sincerely, Bethany Caruso. Next public comment was submitted by Nicola Collins. Regarding the draft historic preservation ordinance, our history and historic district is what makes Boulder City unique and is fundamental to our identity and our tourist industry. I don't know what's going on with our mics. If we don't protect it, we will lose it. Over the last few years, we have tried an ordinance with no teeth. It didn't protect anything, and we have lost many historic properties. This is a good ordinance, I hope you will support it. Next public comment was submitted by Lois Do Not. Regarding the proposed new historic preservation ordinance, I, Lois Do Not, believe it is a good idea to have a guideline for the Boulder City Historic District homes and businesses. I am concerned about a situation where the city of Boulder City requires a homeowner to comply with all of our historic preservation requirements without providing any kind of funding to the homeowner to complete the compliance project to bring the homeowners' home up to the required historic preservation standards. There should be a fund set up that a homeowner can apply to where they may have financial support if needed. Also, when a person sells their home, it should be required that the new owner is notified about the city of Boulder City Historic Preservation Ordinance before entering into any kind of contract for the sale of the home in question. The city of Reno has guidelines for historic district homes at, and she lists a website, and this will be available in our minutes. Possibly, the city of Boulder City could use the city of Reno guidelines to guide the city of Boulder City to write its own guidelines for historic preservation of homes and businesses in the historic district of Boulder City, Nevada. Next comment was submitted by Roseanne Rabiola Mealy. Item number eight, I support making historic preservation items mandatory and no longer Next comment was submitted by Dr. Valerie McNay. I support the proposed historic preservation ordinance and hope City Council will too. I read the comprehensive 17-page draft historic preservation ordinance, and appreciate the two years of discussion and work by the ad hoc historic preservation committee consisting of two historic preservation committee members and two city council members in the creation of this ordinance. Is that you?
I mean, is this one?
Can you just hit? End. I believe the city staff, city council, and historic preservation committee have been doing a good job of preserving historic structures in Boulder City, but clearly need to do better as historic resources have declined from 82% to 42%, which is below the minimum threshold required for listing on the National Register of Historic Places. I do not live in the historic district, but I know many Boulder Cityites who do, and most attended the 51422 Historic Preservation Day, and informative activities, including the proposed changes in the ordinance from voluntary to mandatory and enforceable preservation features, which apply in a fair and sensible way to the front of properties. Most appeared supportive of the new proposed historic preservation ordinance. The two new historic preservation grant funds, including residential, $100,000 with up to $10,000 per project, demonstrates the support the city has been doing to help with historic preservation in Boulder City. Please support this proposed historic preservation ordinance. Next comment was submitted by Jolie Le Chance. Regarding draft historic preservation ordinance, it's unfair to impose a financial burden on people who are already in the property. You might consider grandfathering the property and imposing that burden on the next buyer, but that is de facto devaluing the property, which constitutes a taking. As anyone knows, Boulder City is charming, but all of the public buildings- As anyone knows, Boulder City is charming, but all of the public buildings and most of the private buildings were built as temporary structures. It is fantastic to see that people are doing and trying to keep them well despite that historical fact, but it is silly to demand that people keep crumbling monuments past their safe and useful life. Next comment was submitted by Ray Vernick. Dear Councilman Mayor, I am one of the many personal hangar owners of the Boulder City Airport, KBVU 3-26. I would like to convey my serious concerns to renew the airport hangar leases. I have owned my hangar since 2015 and have taken great pride to support the airport as well as the airport staff. This hangar is of great importance to me because it provides a place to shelter and maintain my personal aircraft. By extending our hangar leases, the city will avoid not only maintenance, but the cost associated with hiring city personnel to manage these hangars. We, all of the hangar owners, feel the anxiety of possibly losing the important asset to shelter our aircraft. We take considerable pride of our ownership of our hangars and our aircraft we have spent years of hard work to procure and maintain. We pay for all repairs and contribute considerable land lease taxes to Boulder City and Clark County. KBVU master plan states that hangars should be privately owned. Many of us volunteer our time to support the communities such as the Young Eagles, a program that promotes our youth by introducing them to aviation. We donate considerable time and resources to cultivate these young people by sharing our many years of experience in aviation. And one of the greatest parts of all of this is to plant a seed that we dream will produce our future aviators. I'm a retired Desert Storm veteran, twenty years United States Air Force. I've spent my life defending my country and its freedom. I respectfully and firmly request you take a serious hard look at all of the stated facts. Aviation has been my personal lifelong pursuit. By extending our land leases, Boulder City and Clark County will have a guaranteed tax base, and it is the least risky way to maintain a stead source of income. It would devastate us to be forced out of our hangars and possibly have to pay rent on a structure that we already own and maintain. We have had many, many meetings with the city with the hope and dream of getting our leases extended. The constant turnover of airport staff causes us to completely start over again and again, resubmitting our suggestions and ideas over and over. There are no words to describe our frustration on this matter. I encourage you to be independent thinkers and grant this request. It is truly the right thing to do for the city, county, and all of the aircraft owners' basic KBVU. There are unprecedented times we all need to work together to maintain these extremely valuable assets. In closing, it has been a pleasure sharing my thoughts, ideas, dreams, and concerns with you. I hope you and your families are safe. Well, please feel free to contact me at any time and welcome your thoughts and feelings on this matter. Most respectfully. Next comment was submitted by John Gustafson. Regarding the expiring hangar ground leases at the Boulder City Airport, please endeavor to develop an equitable solution by renewing the expiring hangar leases with the current hangar owners. The Airport Enterprise Fund is on sound financial footing now and projected to be well-funded long into the future. Updating the lease prices at the time of execution with fair market costs is the right thing to do for citizens, airport users of Boulder City. I comprehend that the original leases had revision clauses which seemed like a good idea at the time they were written. Now that we're nearing the end of the leases, it's time to modernize, update, and renew the leases and allow the citizens and tenants to continue their pride of ownership positions on the airport. Thank you for serving the citizens of our great city. That's all I have.
Thank you. Again, I'll ask, is there anyone in chambers that would like to speak during the initial public comment period? Please come forward. State your name.
Svetalina Stefanova. I would like to voice my support of a historic preservation ordinance with teeth. It is very much needed in historic Boulder City. If we want to keep calling ourselves that and preserve our history, we need to have an ordinance that actually does that. It was unanimously supported by the Historic Preservation Ad Hoc Committee. It is, we are in danger of losing our CLG status. And the draft ordinance is very similar to or not what the state has in many other local places in the state. And yeah, that's about it. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Turner, please state your name.
I'm Ray Turner, and I am a member of the Historic Preservation Committee here. Maybe I can do it properly for a change. And so, just what Svetalina was trying to say was that the ordinance is a model historic preservation ordinance put out by the State Historic Preservation Office, SHIPO. And so, it's a model ordinance. It's not unsimilar to a lot of ordinances around the country and the state, and it offers basic historic preservation protections. I wasn't, not here to try and sell it. Obviously, I'm a member of the committee and I don't speak for the whole committee, but I think it's probably okay for me to point out that, yes, it was unanimously recommended by our committee. And I personally think that we needed to reverse the trend of the loss of the historic features. Mr. Shane also was trying to express that in 1982, we had a historic survey done, and, excuse me. And at that time, we had about eighty-two percent contributing properties in the historic district. And you have to have a survey to get onto the National Register. It has to be demonstrated that you have more than fifty-one percent. And at that time, we had eighty-two, which was fantastic. And the survey that we had done recently exposed that we are now down to forty-three percent, which is far below the threshold, the minimum threshold, to be listed on the National Register. So, I just wanted to clarify that information. Thanks.
Thank you. Anyone else? All right, seeing no others, we will close the public comment period. Move to approval of the agendas. For the regular agenda, Madam City Clerk, any changes?
No changes.
Madam City Attorney?
No changes.
And Mr. City Manager?
No changes.
Thank you. Council members, any changes for the regular agenda?
No changes.
No changes.
Thank you. Anyone wishing to make a motion for approval?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? All right, we'll move on to the consent agenda. Again, Madam City Clerk?
No changes.
Madam City Attorney?
No changes.
And Mr. City Manager?
No changes.
Thank you. Council members, any changes for the consent agenda?
No changes.
Anyone wishing to make a motion?
I move to approve the consent agenda as written.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Thank you. We'll move then to first item on the regular agenda, item number five, introduction of bill number nineteen sixteen. Anyone wishing to introduce this bill? Councilmember Bridges?
Yes, I would like to move to introduce bill number nineteen sixteen. Waive the reading by title only.
Bill number nineteen sixteen, an ordinance of the City of Boulder City, Nevada approving agreement number twenty-two dash nineteen eighty between the City of Boulder City and Townsite Solar Two LLC for an option to lease approximately eighty-eight acres of land located point six miles south of the interstate, eleven US 95 interchange, and immediately west of US 95 for purposes of a solar energy production facility at an annual lease rate of $2,000 per acre. Bill number nineteen sixteen will be considered at the June thirteenth, 2022 city council meeting.
Thank you. Item number six for possible action. Mr. City Manager?
Yes, this is a two-part agenda item, and Mr. Michael Mazer, Community Development Director, will be handling this item. The first part is a public hearing on the proposed zoning ordinance text amendment, and then the second part is consideration of bill nineteen fifteen.
Good afternoon, Mayor and members of the city council. So, when multifamily development is being proposed in Boulder City, one of the requirements with the development proposal is that the developers also provide a landscaping plan. Our code is set up that sets up a point system with that landscaping plan, and the code favors the installation of sod as part of that requirement. Obviously, with the region's concerns with water conservation, we have had a lot of interest by our existing multifamily developments and HOAs to take advantage of the Southern Nevada Water Authority's turf removal incentive program. The challenge is that their landscaping plans were approved by Boulder City, and to remove that turf, they need to have approval of an variance by the city because they can't meet the landscaping requirements. So, to help those developments be able to take advantage of the SNWA's rebate program, staff has prepared this text amendment. This would allow those developments to apply for the rebate program, meet the requirements of SNWA, which basically says that when they remove turf, they have to replace it with trees and shrubs that, of course, are desert tolerant, and at maturity must cover fifty percent of the area that had been previously covered by turf. And so, this minor text amendment would immediately address that and avoid future variance requests, and staff will continue to work with Southern Nevada Water Authority and our other municipal partners in the valley to look at further or more comprehensive changes to the landscaping ordinance. And with that, I can answer any questions.
Thank you, Mr. Mazer. This is a public hearing, so at this time, if council members have specific questions for Mr. Mazer, they should be asked now. However, comments or opinions should be reserved till after the public hearing. Any questions for Mr. Mazer regarding this bill? All right, we will open the public hearing then. Anyone wishing to speak with regard to this bill? Please do so. Mr. Shane, please come forward.
Judy DeShane, I think it is a good bill, and it should be approved. I've sat at the planning commission meetings frequently where the homeowners in the multifamily development areas have come forward in having to go through this variance and go through the planning commission and all this kind of stuff to remove sod and replace it with a desert landscape. And it just seems like a heck of a hassle that they shouldn't have to go through. So, I think this is a good change, and you guys should approve it. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else wishing to speak? All right, we will take any call-in comments at this time. The phone number seven zero two five eight nine nine six two nine. This is a public hearing regarding bill nineteen sixteen, excuse me, nineteen fifteen regarding changes to the landscaping code. Again, this is a public hearing on bill nineteen fifteen regarding changes to Title eleven for landscaping requirements. Anyone wishing to call in? The phone number seven zero two five eight nine nine six two nine. Madam City Clerk, were there any emails received for this agenda item?
No.
Hearing no others then, we will close the public comment period for the public hearing. Council members, anyone have questions or comments regarding this? Councilmember Adams?
Thank you, Mayor. Obviously, this is a step in the right direction. It's something that we need to address now so that it can be addressed without having to go through the variance process, but it is, you know, only, as I said, it's sort of a Band-Aid fix at this point. As a member that serves on the Southern Nevada Water Authority, you know, we have been making several suggestions, I mean, essentially passing resolutions in support of municipalities adopting as ordinance regarding the amount of turf. We're also talking about water use, stuff like that. I guess my question would be, has the city already started having those conversations with the Southern Nevada Water Authority? As we do this now, as part of this temporary fix so that they can start taking advantage of those rebate programs now, is the city, you know, having further conversations? So, as we move in here into the near future, we are making more robust changes that need to be met?
Yes. So, I have been participating with our regional partners, with SNWA. SNWA is hoping that all the municipalities will update their landscaping ordinances and be consistent across the region. So, we're working to work with them and the other jurisdictions.
And those conversations have already begun?
Yes.
Great, thank you.
Other questions or comments? Councilmember Bridges?
Yeah, I just wanted to comment that I think it's imperative that we do everything possible to conserve water and make sure that our city code and ordinances support our conservation goals. We want you to conserve water and remove turf, and yet you do that, and you're going to be out of compliance with the ordinance. That makes no sense whatsoever, so I strongly support this change.
Thank you. Anyone else? I would just comment, you know, earlier in the meeting, there was a comment regarding our historic district. You know, I do understand people's desire to have this. This particular change, I know, had come from some of the townhome developments down in Hemingway Valley. They asked for this to happen even before the state legislature passed a law last year saying that non-functional turf must be removed in the next few years. So, this was something that came forward from developments here in Boulder City. I know we are known as Clean Green Boulder City for good reason. We also know that Lake Mead has dropped, you know, some hundred and forty, hundred and fifty feet in the last few years. The bodies and the boats are showing up as the lake continues to drop. We have to take action. It's that simple. And it's not just us, but as I mentioned, the state legislature has passed a law, SNWA is passing resolutions. We have gotten to the point where- We have gotten to the point where this is no longer voluntary. It's no longer something that we can just talk about and dream about for another day. It's here, and I think this is a good start to it. As I say, these particular multifamily developments down in Hemingway, they've asked for this because it costs them a great deal to maintain water and support these turf areas. So with that, I will move for approval of Bill Number 1915.
I'll second.
All those in favor?
Based on the findings.
The findings are that this bill will support the changes in landscaping.
They're addressed in the staff report, as long as your motion is included, based on staff finding.
Let me be specific then. All right, the findings then are that the proposed amendment is in general conformance with the adopted comprehensive plan for the city, and that the proposed amendment promotes the health, safety, morals, or general welfare of the city. Again, my motion will be to approve Bill Number 1915 with those findings included.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Thank you. Now move to item number seven. Seem to be having a microphone problem tonight. Matters pertaining to the fiscal year 2022, '23 tentative and final budget. Mr. City Manager?
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and councilmembers. Tonight's final budget presented for financial year '22 through '23 is the first full budget developed as your city manager. The budget addresses current issues facing the city and provides for a high level of service delivery as we move into a post-pandemic landscape. Through the leadership of you, the governing body, the input of residents, and staff throughout the year, I'm confident that this budget reflects the vision and values citizens of Boulder City expect from their local government. One item to note this evening, the classification and compensation listing included in your packet should not be confused with the compensation and classification study, which was developed earlier this year. The study will be brought back at a later date for council's consideration for implementation. The resolution for the classification and compensation listing presented with the budget this evening is a procedural document which dictates what we pay our employees over the next fiscal year and is required by the city charter. I'd like to thank our team of finance professionals for their countless hours of work to make this an appropriate, realistic, and fiscally conservative budget that utilized new software for the budget book this year, which had its own unique opportunities and challenges, resulting in a clearer presentation of the hundreds of pages of data within the budget book. I'll now turn this over to our Finance Director, Diane Pelletier, and her team.
Good afternoon, Mayor and council. I think before we do the PowerPoint, the first item is the public hearing, so I would think we want to do that first, and then we would go into our presentation.
I would say before you leave the podium, Ms. Pelletier, are there any council members who have specific questions? Again, since this is a public hearing, you should hold comments or opinions until after the public hearing. Any questions at this time? All right, thank you, Ms. Pelletier. We will then open the public hearing on the fiscal year 2022, '23 tentative budget. Is there anyone wishing to speak regarding the budget for the next fiscal year? All right, we will take any phone calls regarding this public hearing on the budget. Anyone wishing to call? The phone number 702-589-9629. Again, this is a public hearing regarding the fiscal year 2022, '23 city budget. This is a public hearing for consideration of the fiscal year 2022, '23 city budget. Anyone wishing to make comment? The phone line is available, 702-589-9629. Madam City Clerk, were there any emails received regarding this public hearing?
No comments were received.
Thank you. All right, hearing no one for this public hearing. We will close the public hearing on the fiscal year 2022, '23 tentative budget. Ms. Pelletier, if you'd like to go ahead.
Turn it on, Diane. Yep, thought I did. I just want to briefly recap on the slide before you how we arrived at this evening. It's been, I feel like, a long process with plenty of opportunities for comment by staff, citizens, and public. In January, from January 18th to the 20th, the department directors met with the budget manager and myself. From January 31st to February 10th, the department directors met with the budget manager, myself, and the city manager. On March 3rd, after we met with the directors, we compiled all the information and created the first draft of the O&amp;M budget. And on March 3rd, we met with the City Council in the first special budget meeting to review the operation and maintenance budgets. On March 16th, we had a staff-led citizen budget workshop to review the operation and maintenance budget. On April 7th, we took all the changes that were presented at those two meetings and compiled the budget that was reviewed by the City Council on April 7th. And on April 15th, we filed that tentative budget with the city clerk, Clark County Clerk and Controller in Nevada Department of Taxation. And at that time, we filed a notice of time and place for budget hearing, which is this evening. On April 19th, we did not need that meeting. So on March, May 16th, we published a notice of the public hearing, which is this evening, and we obtained an affidavit of publication. And tonight is the big night where hopefully we adopt the final budget and the capital improvement program and the pay classifications. So with that, I'm going to turn this over to the budget manager because there's been some slight changes that have happened since April 7th, and she's going to give you an overview of those changes.
So as Diane mentioned, this is the third time we've met to discuss the fiscal year '23 operational budget. We also met several times to discuss the capital improvement plan, including the April 7th meeting where it was tentatively approved. The budget does not actually have a formal resolution when you approve it. The one part of the budget that does have the resolution is the approval of the classification and compensation listing. So Resolution 7461 creates new job classification titles and position ranges that are required by city code. These reflect the 3% non-representative wage increases that were approved on April 7th. They also include the city manager and city clerk range increase that was approved on April 26 council meeting in Resolution 7445. It includes the utility billing worker position, which was approved on March 3rd in Resolution 7413, and a minimum wage increase from 975 to 1050. It's created a classification for a court clerk. And also before you, there is an adjustment to the part-time classification listing, which includes a landscape worker, which will assist our landscape team as needed. And I'm here to answer any questions you may have on the classification and compensation listing.
Thank you. Questions or comments? There had been some discussion, and I know that there was a change made in the pay levels at the lowest levels for positions like lifeguards, crossing guards. Clearly, the pay levels for that are no longer competitive. That was changed. I believe it went from nine something an hour to 10 something an hour. I know my discussion had been that the 10 something is probably still too low. I don't see any opportunity to do anything about that at this time. Is that correct or incorrect?
At this moment, right now, I believe this is coming back later with the study.
Okay. You know, I don't understand why we do these things when we're increasing it, and then we're saying, well, we'll wait and maybe consider doing it later. Also, I voiced my concern about having our appointed officials included in this. I believe that the city charter is very clear in regard to the difference between appointed officials and employees, and this seems to group them all in together for consideration as employees. I think that's a very dangerous thing to do. I think it's in violation of the city charter, and it's not something I'm in agreement with. I've stated that before. I think it's very clear, but apparently our city charter doesn't seem to have much weight when it comes to us actually making considerations. Any other questions or comments? Anyone wishing to do anything with Resolution 7461?
Yes, I'd like to make a motion to accept Resolution Number 7461.
I'll second that.
All those in favor?
Aye.
I am opposed. Motion carries four to one. Our next portion of this then is discussion and approval of the fiscal year 2022, '23 final operating and capital budgets. Anything further you wanted to present on that, Mrs. Mannanen?
Yes, I'm going to start with the changes from the April 7th meeting. So I'm going to start with the general fund. The general fund is the main fund for the city, and it's used for general revenues and Since our April 7th meeting, the expenses did increase $788,000, but the majority of these expenses were all included for approval in the April 7th meeting. They include ARPA operational costs of $305,000. As you all know, even though you have funding for something, if it's not in the budget, you can't spend it. So there is $305,000 in this in fiscal year '22's operating budget that won't be spent until fiscal year '23. So these include $50,000 for the defibrillators, $50,000 for emergency aid, $155,000 for PPE, and the $50,000 mounted horse housing with the nonprofit. So all that funding has been moved to fiscal year '23 when it will be spent. It also includes the 3% non-representative wage increase that was improved on the April 7th meeting, the city manager and city clerk contractual increases, and also an increased O&amp;M in landscaping for the dog park for $11,000. Some new items since our last meeting for the general fund include a workers' comp premium increase of $45,000, health insurance premium increase of $74,000, the contingency increase to $41,000 to match the 3% limit. We're currently in the process of an IT switch conversion, which unfortunately, we won't get the equipment until fiscal year '23, so the funding for that has been moved to fiscal year '23 for $30,000. We also moved the 911 service contract from IT to public safety for $11,000. So before I move on to the special revenue funds, does anyone have any questions they would like to ask about the general fund?
Questions or comments? Councilmember Jorgensen?
Yes, thank you. So the monies that we move to the next, they were already funded in '22, so we should have monies moving forward to roll over.
It's, so operation budget doesn't roll over, so it just won't be spent in '22, but we're adding it to '23. So it's just our costs will come in lower in '22. We're not going to spend any extra ARPA money, that money is going to be spent in '23.
Okay, and then the hiring of extra, is that an extra position for landscaping?
It's a part-time position, so it gives them the option to hire part-time workers to assist them with landscaping needs as needed.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Bridges?
Yeah, I have a question about the funding that was given to emergency aid at Boulder City. I will disclose that I am the grant coordinator for emergency aid of Boulder City, but I was curious, so that $50,000 sits until '23, right? So the reimbursements would not be made until after July 1?
So I added the whole $50,000 because we haven't had any requests as of right now into '23, but if they were to request and we were to pay out $10,000 in '22, we would just reduce the amount for '23, but just to be safe because none of it's been spent so far. But we'd make sure we have the capability to make sure that no more than $50,000 will be spent.
Okay, so that money could be spent in '22?
It could.
Okay, just wanted to confirm. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? With regard to the amount that's being budgeted for the landscape technician, which is being tied with the dog park, you know, in my view, there has been significant information that has come up over the past couple of weeks about this project in its entirety. I don't believe that the information that was presented to council was complete or accurate from Parks and Recreation about the changes that are being contemplated. I have some real serious concerns about the project going forward as it's planned. I understand that the $11,000 out of a $42 million budget is a fairly small amount, but I think that project in itself, since it is being treated somewhat separately, really needs to have another hard look taken at it in light of the information that has come out over the past couple of weeks. The other items that I have deal primarily with the utility fund, so would you prefer I address those later?
Yes, please.
Thank you. Go ahead then.
Okay. So if there's no more questions on the general fund, we're going to move on to the special revenue funds. And special revenue funds have a specific purpose, unlike the general fund, which is for basically general funding of all, everything related to the city. So the changes since our April meeting, workers' comp premium increased, and this affected the More Cops Fund, the Crime Prevention Fund, the Municipal Court Assessed Fees Fund, and the Redevelopment Fund. The health insurance premium increases and the 3% non-representative wage increase impacted the Municipal Court Assessed Fees Fund and also the Redevelopment Fund. We also updated all the approved CIP changes from the tentative approval at the April 7th meeting, and we updated the approved ARPA changes at the April 7th meeting that were approved with the Resolution 7434. In addition to this, we added $65,000 to the VERF expense budget due to a police car that was recently wrecked and for replacement of it in fiscal year '23. And happy to answer any questions you may have on the special revenue funds.
Thank you. Questions or comments? Questions or comments? I always find it difficult when we look at the utility budget and see money coming out and money going in, but one of the amounts that comes out and seems to be ever-increasing are the administrative costs, and they're now well over $3 million. That seems to be about a million-dollar increase over the past three or four years. I've asked many times to have that information as to what that cost is and why it continues to go up. If you take away our public safety and recreation, which I'm assuming does not have anything to do with the administration of our utilities, because that's the explanation, the general explanation, is that the administrative costs are those that are borne by general fund employees and processes that need to come out of the utility fund. So the explanation I've been given, then, would seem to exclude any public safety or recreation. Those two components add up to about half of our budget. So if we're taking over $3 million, I actually think it's getting close to $4 million now in administrative costs out of the other half of the budget, we're saying that 20% to 25% of every other process in the city is going to support the utility fund. I don't find that appropriate. I don't find that the fact that an enterprise fund is having that much money taken out of it for what does not appear to be actual costs incurred and that we're not able to document, or at least not provide me with that documentation, is appropriate. It's a significant amount of money. It continually increases, and I don't find that there's an explanation for why the amount is going and why it's continually increasing.
So that admin fund isn't just the $1 million that is for supporting the general government. It also includes utility billing and all their costs, and also the admin that's inside utilities, such as the director of utilities and his analyst, and other positions that are directly paid out of utilities. That is not for one particular utilities, but for the utilities as a whole.
I understand that. I'm referring to the administrative costs that are transferred out of the enterprise fund, known as the utility fund, into the general fund.
That's a million dollars.
Not based on what I've seen. And, you know, if there's something in there that's different, I'd be happy to take a look at that, but that's not what I see when I go through this budget. I see much more than that being transferred out of an enterprise fund.
So the interfund transfers in the general fund are the only transfer that goes into the general fund, which is $1,025?
The breakdown for this is on page seven of the Proprietary Funds Executive Summary
I've looked at that. What I'm, the point I'm getting at is the reasons that are being given for these charges don't seem to be supported. And it's a significant amount of money that comes out of the utility fund. On the good note, the reserve that we have set up for many of these specialty funds, they are nearing the target balances that we have for those funds, and I think that puts the city in a very good financial position. Those reserve funds were set up for contingencies, so we have ones for extraordinary repairs and maintenance. We have others for risk management. I think, again, we are putting our citizens in a position of financial security with the actions that have been taken over the past few years with the budget to establish and fund these. Once these funds do become fully funded, of course, they're going to get depleted and need to be replenished from time to time, maybe on an annual basis, depending on the type of fund, but I do think it should give our citizens confidence that the city has put itself on a very sound financial footing. Any other questions or comments? Ms. Manonin, anything further?
I'm going to go on to the utility fund changes since our last meeting. So, again, just like the other funds, the utilities, workers' comp premium increased, the 3% non-representative wage increase, and also the health insurance premium increase. These increases total about $100,000 for the utility funds combined. We also updated the approved CIP changes, including ARPA from the tentative approval in the April 7th meeting. These changes were also approved at the Utility Advisory Committee meeting on May 4th. And that concludes my presentation on the fiscal year '23 budget, and I'm happy to answer any questions you may have.
Thank you. Questions or comments? Councilmember Adams?
Thank you. I guess I just wanted to thank staff with finance and really everybody, and it's kind of everybody has to work on this. Obviously, it's a big lift, so I wanted to thank everybody for all the hard work that went into this. Obviously, this conversation seems pretty quick, but there were several hours of conversation prior to this, as was shown earlier here at several other workshop meetings, so I just wanted to put that thanks out there to the staff for everything that you guys have done.
Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Bridges?
Yeah, I want to say thank you, too. I know I've been through this process a few times now, and it is, I know my reading through it is just this much of the effort compared to what you all have been working on over the last year. We did bring up, just brought up, the mayor brought up that question of the utility administration expenses, and I am curious of the difference between central services, billing and collections, and administration. I know one, I know some of it has to do with the utility paying the city for those services that the city provides that directly deal with the day-to-day operations of the utilities, but I'm curious what a better definition for me would be.
Okay. So the central services does include the $1,025 that is part of the interfund transfer, and it's not a transfer. You'll see credit in different areas that support the utilities, such as finance and the city manager and city clerk and everyone who does valid efforts to support the utilities. Also, the administration is basically the administration. So it's the director and all of his staff that support the utilities, but they don't support just specifically utilities, water, wastewater. Water support, all of the utilities, so that's why they're not broken out into the individual utilities. And billing and collections is just that. It's just utility billings. So it's the utility billing staff, it's the service charges that are charged for credit cards, it's everything that related to utility billing.
Okay, so the central services are above and beyond the cost of utility billing and above and beyond the cost of the administration, the humans that are part of that process. This is just that part of, other parts of the general fund or the city government that support the utilities.
And there's also insurance that the utilities pay, which comes out of the central services.
And it comes out of central services. Thank you. I appreciate that.
Thank you for asking.
I know the issue was brought up about the dog park, and I just, I think it's interesting, and I don't want to blame anyone. I don't, I just, I want to understand better why it took all of this time and all of this time that we've been discussing dog parks and where we're going to put them and the best options and using ball fields and whether to use two of them. In the last week, suddenly I've been inundated, inundated with emails from people complaining about the fact that they're going to lose ball field number three. I've never heard about it before, ever heard about it before the last week that this was going to be a conflict. So I'm just curious about where we're going to go with that $11,000. So that, and I know that's not really a question for you. You're not, you know, I'm...
So I'll answer it, though. So a budget is a plan, and there is a plan to hopefully have a dog park within the year for Boulder City. That $11,000 would assist landscaping for that. If we, if dog park doesn't happen, $11,000 won't be spent, but if we don't put it in right now and we do have a dog park, we can't add it later.
Okay, so the $11,000 is not specific to turning softball field number three at Veterans Park into a dog park?
Absolutely not.
Okay, that's all I want to know because I know I'm going to be beaten over the head by emails after this. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Councilmember Jorgensen?
Yes, I just also wanted to say thank you. I'm sure the general public probably doesn't understand the amount of paperwork that even we went through prior to this meeting, from page 200 to 1,000-something of our packet tonight to look at the work that you've done. But I also want to state that it is available for them, that you guys do publish and do have things available, resources available for you to be able to also access this information. It's not private, it's public, and this is the city's budget. It's not our budget, it's your budget that lives here, and so, but you've done the work on it, and I thank you for it, and I thank you for your transparency and your willingness to put it out in such a way that there's 400 pages or more, 800 pages available. So thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? My final comment on it would be the fact that, you know, each year, I've seen, I believe, five of these now, each year, the amount of information is getting better. A big problem that I have is, over that period of time, we have an ever-changing format for the budget, and that does make it difficult to go back and look. I do understand that the changes are being made for the, you know, I know the desire is that, to make the process better. Changing over a system that you're using is, of course, going to require changes be made. I think, though, that sometimes we're losing things as we go through these constant changes on the budget, and it makes it very difficult to look back year over year to see where we started from and where we're at now, but I do appreciate the work that the finance staff does, all the department heads having to get Ms. Pelletier the information that she's requiring. There's an awful lot of work. I do respect that, but I still have a problem with how we get to where we're at on these budgets. Anyone else? Anyone wishing to take any action regarding the budget?
Does, does this require a motion to approve the budget as submitted?
Yes.
I would like to make a motion to approve the budget as submitted.
I'll second that.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carries four to one.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Manonin and Ms. Pelletier. Item number eight for possible action, city council direction regarding possible changes to the historic preservation ordinance. Mr. City Manager?
Yes, Community Development Director Michael Mays will be handling the discussion tonight regarding the historic preservation ordinance.
One of the goals of the 2025 city strategic plan is to amend the city codes to achieve historic preservation goals. And to help accomplish that objective, the city council, on October 13th, 2020, established through Resolution Number 7167, a Boulder City Historic Preservation Ordinance Ad Hoc Committee. This consisted of two members of the Historic Preservation Committee and two members of the city council. Their purpose, to look at the existing historic preservation ordinance and propose changes to that ordinance to accomplish that goal. The ad hoc committee held six meetings over an 18th month period where they evaluated other examples of historic preservation ordinances within the region and the country. It's also included what we refer to as the State Historic Preservation Office Model Ordinance. Committee hosted two community workshops in June of 2021. All the property owners within the existing historic district were notified of the public workshops, and that was approximately 517 properties. Approximately 50 people attended those two workshops, including business owners and property owners. The comments that they had provided at the workshop were contained in the packet for your review. In August of 2021, the city council approved the Boulder City Historic Preservation Plan. This was prepared by the Nevada Preservation Foundation. Included in the report were recommendations to amend the existing historic preservation ordinance and to create a certificate of appropriateness process that would require prior approval before the issuance of a building permit. On March 15th of 2020, the ad hoc committee passed a motion, four to zero, to recommend to the city council the draft ordinance for your consideration at this meeting. Just to briefly summarize what this ordinance entails, this was included in your packet, but for the benefit of the public, as noted previously with the historic preservation plan recommendation, property owners within a historic district obtain a certificate of appropriateness from the city prior to receiving a building permit. That would include a city and potential historic preservation commission review of the project for exterior improvements that can be seen from the street. What would be reviewed would be the design guidelines that are established for that area and for that property, obviously the historic preservation ordinance, and the Secretary of Interior Standards for the treatment of historic properties. These elements would be reviewed in order to issue the certificate of appropriateness. It would also require city approval of the demolition of any property within a historic district. The ordinance also creates maintenance standards for buildings within historic districts and would replace the current historic preservation committee with a historic preservation commission. Staff is now seeking direction from the city council on whether to proceed with a proposed text amendment to Title 11 of the city code, which contains the historic preservation ordinance, to consider the committee's recommendations. If the council provides that direction this evening, staff would move forward with a text amendment process that would include a public hearing before the planning commission because any amendments to Title 11 of varsity code require planning commission review and recommendation. This public hearing would include a notification of all property owners within the historic district. The planning commission would provide a recommendation. That recommendation would come back to the city council, and as with any amendment to the city's codes, it would first be a bill introduction where no action is taken, and at the subsequent city council meeting, the city council would consider that proposed text amendment. And with that, I will answer any questions.
Thank you, Mr. Mays. And again, I want to thank you. This has been years in the making, and the work that you and your staff have put into not only getting your own expertise involved, but organizing outside expertise on this. I'm very hopeful, but I would like to mention that this process is something that's been more than 40 years in the making. Back when the original survey of the historic district was done that listed the district on the national register, there was a committee that had been formed to do that, and their goal, of course, was once the survey was done and was completed, if it were to be listed, then the city would move forward with an ordinance similar to what we are looking at today. That, the survey was done, the district was listed on the national... at today. That, the survey was done, the district was listed on the National Register, and nothing happened. Recommendation is that the survey, or a survey, be done every 10 years. There was never a survey done until just, I believe, last year, or 2020, where we had set aside money to hire a firm to come in and resurvey. And again, that's where we have found that the number of properties that continue to contribute to the historic district has fallen by about 50% from the original. That's not helping with preserving our history. The process that has been used in this case is similar to past attempts at doing this. So, there was an attempt in the 80s, there was an attempt in the 90s, there was an attempt in the early 2000s. And what I've seen is a pretty consistent way of doing this, where we put a tremendous amount of effort into it. I believe that the level of expertise that we have brought into this process this time has been higher than what was done in the past, but there were some very good people involved in this in the past. They came up with some very thorough recommendations to be made, and none of those were followed through on. They all seem to find some way to fall through the cracks. I attended a panel discussion a couple of weeks ago during the Historic Preservation Day with Jill Legan as one of the panelists, and was not surprised to hear her bring up some of these same arguments that have been used to kill these efforts off in the past of, well, have you talked to everyone? Does everyone agree? What about this? What about that? There was a survey done early on in this process where there were more than 850 responses to that survey. Overwhelmingly, the residents were approving, and not just residents, but there were more than 100 business owners who had responded to that. As you mentioned earlier, there has been a letter sent out to every address within the historic district to try and get their input on this. We've been hiring firms to reach out to the community. There have been town halls conducted. There have been many things conducted, and every time, what we hear back from the residents is overwhelmingly that they want to do historic preservation, and they feel that what we're doing right now is not adequate. This ordinance, I think, is a serious step in that direction. The State Historic Preservation Office, known as SHIPO, had finally put together a model ordinance that this is being based on. This isn't just a bunch of people sitting around coming up with ideas. These are based on the Secretary of Interior Standards with the input from the State Historic Preservation Office to get us to a point where we have an ordinance that will look like hundreds of other communities around this country who have gotten serious about preservation, and not just around the country. You know, when you look at small towns here in Nevada, like Eureka, they've done some amazing things there with their preservation. Towns have realized that the value that they have is in their historic architecture. Certainly not all of Boulder City is historic, but we do have a defined historic district here. And this ordinance, I think, will finally give some protection to that, but we've also taken the steps of creating grant programs that will help people maintain the home, maintain the architecture of a property, so that it will continue to be contributing to our historic district. I know there have been surveys done regarding economic development, and one of the things that always rates highly on that is the historic significance of Boulder City. If we continue to lose these buildings, continue to lose our architecture to this, we're going to lose a real incentive that people have to visit Boulder City as well as Hoover Dam. So, this ordinance has taken time to develop. There were a number of public meetings that were done. It has been reviewed by our city attorney, by the Nevada Preservation Foundation, by Northwind Consulting, by the State Historic Preservation Office. It took some time to get that wording together, but I think that we have something here that can absolutely be put forward to our residents and say, we're actually going to do something this time. We're actually going to do preservation in Boulder City. Historic Boulder City is finally going to do something about their historic preservation. So, I do have one suggestion for a change on the ordinance that I can mention later. Is there anyone else wishing to speak on this item? Councilmember Adams?
Thank you, Mayor. I think, as has been discussed, this has been a discussion that we have been having for a long time. I know before I was even on council, I participated in a number of surveys. I myself have attended a number of town hall meetings on just this very subject. It is obviously very important to the community here, and we have seen what a voluntary ordinance looks like. We have seen the consequences of allowing, you know, participation or, you know, the ability to not participate within it, and we are suffering the consequences of that. We have to give this a shot, and I think, at the very least, you know, by moving this forwards to, it will have to go through even more of a process, planning commission, again, agendizing it, you know, making, introducing it, and then, of course, adoption. There are going to be even more opportunities for the public to speak out. But there really is, I think it's important we understand, there is no such thing as historic preservation without the tools of enforcement. Otherwise, it's just kind of wishful thinking, and we've seen what wishful thinking has gotten us to this point. So, I absolutely am in favor of moving forward with this, though I am, of course, willing to hear any potential amendments or changes to it.
Thank you. Councilmember Bridges?
Thank you. This is emotional. I think this is fantastic. I, we've lived here for 10 years. We recently sold our house, which is a contributing house. And we had recently moved in, and there was this lovely hospital across the street that was a retreat center, and I thought it was so beautiful. What a lovely town. And I know the history, and I know what happened, and I know private property, and I know all the story behind it, but that with, with a wrecking ball, suddenly that hospital was gone. And I thought, well, there's got to be some ordinance, there's got to be something behind this. And I started researching our ordinance, and this was 10 years ago, and I was shocked. And I would joke with people, and I'd say, it reads like, well, if you wouldn't mind, or if you have the time, maybe you would want to consider. But it had no depth, no weight, no teeth. And I was absolutely shocked. And when I got elected to council, I thought, in my tenure, I would love to see an effective enforceable ordinance that supports our historic assets. And this is that. And I want to, first of all, I want to give credit to all of the people, to the ad hoc committee, to the Historic Preservation Committee, to community development, to the residents who live in the historic district who have given feedback. And I don't buy this, well, we need more people to give their opinion. Lots and lots of people have given their opinion, and there is support for a strong historic district, historic preservation ordinance. I think the most shocking experience I had was when someone was able to hold a historic building hostage. That if something didn't go their way, if a vote didn't go their way, if an election didn't go their way, that they were going to demolish a historic building. And they would have had the ability to do it if they wanted to. So, I don't ever want to think that that can happen here in Boulder City. So, I'm very strongly supportive of this historic preservation ordinance, and I know that there will be changes and that somebody will say, well, what about this, or what about that? But I cannot sit by and watch something like this just go along the way as other good ideas have. That's it. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Jorgensen?
Yes, thank you. So, of course, I look at our historic district, and I absolutely agree that it is the backbone of why this town even exists. It's either the city that built the dam, or the dam built the city, one or the other. They coexist together, and it has an important place in history. I, too, had an opportunity to serve on the ad hoc committee that looked at this ordinance. I came in at the end. I know the mayor was on at the beginning. So, I came in near the end of it. All this had pretty much been done when I got in there. I probably am going to bring up a few things, having gone through all the minutes and everything from the past meetings, because I wanted to look at things before I got in to get up to speed. I saw that in the past, when they did put together in 1996, a Historic District Preservation Plan Study Committee, that over nearly 24 months, they met 33 times, held four special meetings, two committee workshops, six community workshops, and conducted their activities such as cable TV programs, outreach efforts, surveys, door-to-door, campaign in in-home meetings. So, with that being said, I probably am going to come up, I did say that we needed to bring this ordinance to City Council to have this very discussion, because this is the place, they said, that we would have this discussion. So, I do have two concerns. And unlike the thoughts that the mayor expressed regarding the opportunity to go to the Historic Preservation Panel, I did not see Jill Legan's comments as coming off as offhanded, or I actually looked at him as them representing a portion of the people that had concerns, and I think we need to remember that. We served on this committee. Three of us did not have homes in that historic district, and we're making these recommendations for people, put their blood, sweat, and tears into these homes. They bought them with their own money. And if they're for this, I'm for this. But I'm also for them having the opportunity to know exactly what this is. And when those 800 or however many people were surveyed, how many of those were these homeowners? And then, how many of them knew this is the specific things that we were going to do? I think that COVID kept us from vetting this appropriately. It was said that 50 people attended the meeting. We have 519 buildings in the historic district. 519 buildings. Of those 50 people, how many of them have a building in the historic district? How many of them came to share their opinion? I know there were some of us up here, but none of us, now that Claudia sold her house, own a home in that historic district. It doesn't mean that it's not important. It doesn't mean that it's not beautiful. But if we are going to tell people who own their own homes what we would hope that they would do to preserve it so that we could have this charm that we love so much, I think it needs to be us going door-to-door, like we just heard from these people, us giving them a copy of this so they know exactly what's happening, so that we can actually have a complete understanding of what it is that they want. These are their homes. A bunch of people who don't own those homes can make a lot of decisions for people that do. And I just don't think that's right. The other thing that I'm a little concerned about is that I know in our February 15th, 2022 meeting, we agreed to include a matrix, which was going to be flushed out later. Now, I feel like this is when it should be flushed out. Before we pass this on for any approval forwarding it, we need to know what that matrix looks like, because that matrix talks about whether contributing and non-contributing, how we expect them to follow this ordinance. If you no longer have a contributing home, and that is 57% of these homes in this district, are you held to these same standards? Are you not allowed to do anything to your home? We haven't flushed this out yet, and it needs to be flushed out so that we know exactly what it is that we're voting on, or exactly what we're proposing to put forward. So, with these things in mind, I don't feel like it's quite ready yet to move forward. That doesn't mean that I don't think parts of it are great. I think the demolition part of it, it needs to be looked at. I think it's a great way to make sure that we don't lose historic properties quickly, and that there's time to take a look at it. But requiring, even though I know this has been said a million times according to them, but not like this. Not like this. This is different than the 850 surveyed. This is a specific thing that needs to be looked at by the specific people that we're asking to live, the things we're creating for them. And that's my opinion and feelings.
Thank you. Anyone else? Just in a little bit of a response to that, one, we're not passing this ordinance tonight. This is the next step in this process. There will continue to be opportunities for people to have input to it. This idea that somehow we are going to get an opinion from 100% of every person who has an interest in this, that never happens anywhere, anytime, in anything the government does. We have made the outreach to the community, not only this time around, but once again, over the past 40 years, and it's always been the same argument. Let, let everything build, let it get to a certain point, and then kill it by saying, well, you haven't talked to everybody. You haven't gotten everybody's buy-in on this. There have been a letter sent to every single household. So, do we send people out now to go to everybody's door and knock on it and give them a copy of this? We've made this available. We've had public meetings for this, and this is not an unusual thing. And the survey that I referred to, the 850-plus, I believe the actual number was 866, those figures are in our packet. It says how many of those people were homeowners in the district, how many were outside the district, how many were outside Boulder City, how many were business owners in the district, how many were business owners outside the district? All of that is broken down. And also, getting to some sort of matrix, it is clear from the Secretary of Interior Standards that this certificate of approval that Mr. Mays had mentioned earlier, that only issues with regard to properties that are contributing. That process is not required of non-contributing property. It is critical that the camouflage that comes with this, well, I don't understand this, or this didn't happen, or how does everybody know about this? The Department of Interior, through the Secretary of Interior Standards for Historic Preservation that began in the early 1960s and has been refined over that period of time, defines what happens, and this ordinance is based on those standards. So, once again, it is not as though this is unusual, or that we're doing something that's confusing people. It's very clear, and hundreds of other communities have found the benefit of doing this. To say that we are going to get buy-in from every single individual on every decision we make, we just passed a $42 million budget, and I'll guarantee you, I can find more than one person who would disagree with more than one item within that budget. This needs to move forward. Councilmember Jorgensen?
Yes, thank you. I'm not trying to camouflage anything under that. What I'm actually saying is 50 people is barely 10%, and that because of COVID, our in-person meetings, correct, had to be limited. And so, we sent out surveys, and we did a couple of things like that. But during that time, I don't know that this specific language, and/or we don't have it completed yet by not completing the matrix. So, they don't specifically know what that matrix is going to look like. And I think it's only fair to have that out there for those people. I disagree. I think 10% responding is not enough. I do think it needs to be higher than 10%. And I agree in that, yes, it's hard to get everybody together or to respond. But I think that we fight for transparency here. That's been your mantra since the beginning. We try to make utilities transparent. We try to make everything that we do transparent. We have books, we have everything so that the public can know what's happening. I realize that we've been transparent in that way, but I think we need to be more urgent before this is passed in letting the homeowners and the business owners themselves understand what it is.
Thank you. Councilmember Bridges?
Yeah, I'm, I'm assuming that a matrix would look similar to the one, which is Figure Six from Independence, Missouri. Is that correct? There's a sample. And I noticed it does have contributing and non-contributing, that this applies to both, that there are different standards for contributing and non-contributing. Is that the case?
So, there will be two vehicles, tools, that the city that the city will utilize as we're evaluating proposed projects within historic districts. The first is the Decision Matrix, which is referred to in the ordinance and is correct. The ad hoc committee chose not to address that at that time, and that would need to be developed. What that is, is a decision tree. So basically, what it says is, if you're doing this type of improvement, you either, and depending on whether you're a contributing property or a non-contributing property, you go through this process. What the Independence, Missouri matrix, as an example, contemplated is that more significant changes would require review by the commission, particularly for contributing properties. Whereas, non-contributing properties wouldn't necessarily go to the commission for review, but would be at a staff review. Then, we also have the design standards for the historic district. The city currently has design standards. They've been in place for over 10 years. And the Historic Preservation Committee currently is evaluating those standards and looking to update them. Part of what they're going to be looking at in the context of this ordinance is how contributing and non-contributing properties would be evaluated. So you have contributing properties within the period of significance, which in the case of our existing historic district is 1930 to 45. Then you have non-contributing properties within the period of significance. What that means is they were built within that time period, but they have been modified so much that they no longer contribute to the district. Now, in some cases, based on changes to those buildings, they may become contributing again. And certainly, that's what we're working to accomplish with the Residential Historic Preservation Grant that the City Council approved to help property owners take a non-contributing to a contributing status. Then you have properties within the historic district that were built outside of the period of significance, so after 1945. And how should they be treated in the design guidelines? And then new construction. So between the Decision Matrix, which is referred to in the ordinance, and the adopted design guidelines, that is how and the process for looking at exterior improvements to properties within a historic district.
I'm just, I'm appreciative of the incredible amount of work. Thank you for the clear understanding. The incredible amount of work that has gone into this over the years. So I am very much in favor of supporting moving this forward. So I just wanted to make sure I got that information. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Jorgensen?
Thank you. I just have one question. So on this matrix, contributing and non-contributing, that it sits here now, and I recognize this isn't our matrix, because I was in the meetings and I know that we've talked about this. And we said that we would do this later and talk over what ours would look like. But we did want to include one. So on this matrix, contributing and non-contributing homes both have to come before the commission, and they both have to come before the administration to be able to make various changes on their homes. So if you're a non-contributing home already, the idea is that you still, if you do anything to your home, on the exterior, frontal especially, it would have to be approved, even if you're not contributing.
Again, that's one example. It's not the example the city has to necessarily adopt.
Okay.
Just to clarify what's in the draft ordinance. The ad hoc committee did approve incorporating the concept of a matrix into the draft ordinance. So the draft ordinance does approve of the concept of a matrix. So both a non-contributing and contributing properties would require a certificate of appropriateness. But depending upon where, what the type of improvement is on the matrix, which has yet to be developed, that's what would, whether the application would be forwarded to the commission or to administrative review.
And I think that's one of the reasons I think we need to have this done before we move this forward, so that we can figure that out.
Thank you. Anyone else? Much of what happens when ordinances are developed is that the policy is put in place. And then the process that is used gets developed by staff. Because until the policy is in place, it is really not possible for staff to develop what the procedure is. So regarding this matrix, again, it is very standard within the Secretary of Interior Standards as far as what a contributing versus non-contributing is. These are seldom things that can vary very much from that standard. Because that's the whole point of the Secretary of Interior issuing those standards. Any of those processes are going to require some oversight by both the Planning Commission and the City Council. Is that an accurate description of the process following the implementation of an ordinance?
Now, when you say oversight by the Planning Commission regarding review of procedures?
Processes, yes.
Any modification to Title 11 would require review by the Planning Commission.
And potential review by City Council, depending on what the issue was or the change was?
With respect to the design guidelines, those were developed by the Historic Preservation Committee and were adopted by resolution by the City Council. So any changes to the design guidelines that would take into consideration the new ordinance would have to go through the same process.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments? I would like to offer one change, and that is to Section 3 of the ordinance. At this time, it currently reads, "There is hereby created a Historic Preservation Commission, which shall consist of blank members, who shall be appointed by the mayor with the advice and consent of the council." Each council member has this. This amendment has been made available to the public as well. To have Section 3A read, A, there shall be, there is hereby created a Historic Preservation Commission, which shall consist of five voting members, who will be appointed by a majority of the council. Each voting member shall be a resident of the city. A majority of the council may also appoint two non-voting ex officio members with the professional training or experience described in subsection 3B. The ex officio members may or may not be residents of the city. The purpose of offering this amendment is to bring this more in line with how the council works with other commissions and committees. The appointments are made by a majority of the council. Also to confirm that, as with our other commissions and committees, people who are members are going to be residents of the city. But because we know that there's often difficulty in finding people with the education and experience that the certified, the CLG status for the city is required by state certification, we may need to look for some outside talent. I know I've already had people wanting to volunteer here in Boulder City because of how much they care about what we have here. So I would offer that amendment, and I would then make a motion.
Mayor, if I may, the ordinance is not before the City Council for adoption. So the ordinance itself cannot be amended. Of course, the proposed changes could be considered in the motion to move the ordinance forward to whichever step the council deems appropriate. I will say that these are three substantive changes. The current draft of the ordinance has all the members appointed by City Council. This would change it to the mayor with advice and consent of the City Council. It appoint two ex officio members that could be non-resident. And another substantive change is it requires all members of the commission to have these demonstrated qualities. Whereas currently, only one member has to have.
And again, perhaps I had the wrong copy, but that is, what I have here, 3A that is listed first, and then 3B, that was the language that I copied out of the packet.
Oh, excuse me, I was... Okay, yes, I'm sorry. The third change is not, is the same as the current ordinance.
So I'm not suggesting any changes to Section 3B. I'm only suggesting changes to Section 3A.
Okay. There is also a subsection C and D in the draft ordinance.
Which I'm not suggesting any changes to.
Okay. Just to be clear, I just wanted to make it clear that the amendment could be considered within the motion to move the ordinance forward, or not considered. But this wouldn't amend the draft ordinance. It's just something that could be moved forward. Does that make sense?
I will attempt to word my motion based on your suggestion. So my motion will be to move the consideration of this ordinance forward with that change to Section 3A that I have suggested to the Planning Commission, I believe is the next step for Planning Commission review.
That is correct.
So once again, my motion is to move this to the Planning Commission for their review with the recommended amendment of Section 3A.
Second.
All those in favor? Anyone opposed?
I'm opposed.
Motion passes 4-1, with Councilmember Jorgensen opposed. Mr. Mays, again, thank you for all your work on this. City Planner Susan Daniolowicz. It's been a haul to get us to this point. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, before moving on to our next item, we will go ahead and take a 15-minute recess and come back at 7:16, 7:17. Or I shouldn't say have some, but calling you.
Okay, he has the number.
All right, we will call the meeting back to order. We are on to item number nine for possible action. Resolution of the City Council determining whether to renew an agreement with Greenheart. Mr. City Manager?
Good evening, Mayor and Councilmembers. Tonight I'll provide an overview for you of this agreement. So the city entered into the concession agreement with Gearheart LLC in 2007 to operate an aerial interpretive trail system, known as Flight Lines now, in Bootleg Canyon Park. The agreement expires June 11th this year, but has two options for renewal, an eight-year and seven-year option. Greenheart does have outstanding obligations from the original agreement that were never completed. And tonight, we're asking the City Council to determine if you'd like to continue with that agreement with Gearheart or go in another direction through an RFP process. So regarding the outstanding obligations, in the last amendment that was approved in 2016, it required for several items to be completed by April 8th of 2018, including a park visitor center, extension of utilities to a visitor center, a shuttle bus transportation system, among others. And none of those were started. In addition, the original fee structure to the city, fees of approximately $130,000 and a per-head fee of $10 per rider were waived in lieu of providing the city a $5 per visitor compensation fee. And with the last operation of the attraction in late 2019, the city has received no revenue since that date. So the city received notice from Greenheart of its desire to renew their agreement for an additional eight years. And on April 27th of this year, the city sent a letter notifying the company of material breach and provided 30 days of opportunity to cure. Greenheart did have a call with staff last week. They did indicate that they heard Nevada was opening back up from the pandemic. And they're pursuing funding from an SBA loan. It's not yet secured yet to reopen in the next year. Materials were provided to you on the dais regarding those plans. So tonight, before you is either approving the resolution, which would approve the eight-year extension. And if you decided to do that, it would just be determining whether they've taken enough steps to cure that breach. And then if you deny the resolution, that would end the agreement. And staff would then prepare an RFP for Greenheart and other potential vendors to submit proposals for how they would operate a system like that at Bootleg Canyon. Mr. Ian Green is available by phone with Greenheart LLC to answer any questions you might have, and I'll also stand for your questions.
Thank you. Any questions or comments? Councilmember Fox?
Yeah, I'd like to ask him what the amount of time he had to fulfill those obligations, on how come it wasn't done?
Mr. Green, can you hear the councilmember's question?
Yeah, sorry, could you kindly repeat that, please?
With the amount of time you had in operation, there were some obligations that you were supposed to fulfill. Can you tell me why they weren't?
Yeah, the obligation was part of the original contract. And as part of the original contract, what we've looked at was, you know, working cooperatively with the city to build a visitor center. And ideally, a multi-use visitor center to go with the biking and hiking use of the park. That was back in 2007. And when we opened in 2008, some of you may recall, the economy closed in 2008. And that, you know, definitely made the whole project quite more challenging. So that opportunity was delayed. And it's been put off, unfortunately, for a significant amount of time. We did, you know, we did grow the business despite the economic turn-down and some major challenges. And we have been able to create over a million dollars in direct payments to the city. We looked at various options. In 2011, we revisited the center and started looking at designs. And really, it was just a matter of what would make the best sense. Unfortunately, at the same time that we started to get towards the visitor center, we saw our operation actually experienced what was originally 50 days a year of wind weather closures. Move up to our last year of operation of almost 140 days of closures. And we saw, and the city's been very cooperative and understanding, is that, you know, we saw the challenges coming with these wind events. And so we had to delay as well. We've been looking at various off-grid opportunities to build the center. I mean, there's a thousand-square-foot minimum. There's an allowance for food and beverage. We, you know, originally, we'd done our research. And it, you know, the way that Bootleg Canyon Park is, it's a great location for that visitor center to take place. But we just have not had the means during the concession to do that. It, like any business, it's been a bit different than what we expected. But we've managed to keep the business going. And ideally, you know, Roger Hall knows, and Brock and others that we've worked with, you know, try to demonstrate that the park can be a sustainable and profitable park. And that, you know, we were employing 20 upwards of 40 people during the operation. And some of you may know, our company, Greenheart, we work around the world in parks and protected areas. I've actually built for the US government in Rwanda, in New Way National Park. And always with that goal of how do you make a park be able to pay for itself? And at times, I know that, you know, we have obligations. And we're trying our best to meet them. And we love to be operating out of the park, out of our own visitor center. It's the perfect location. But if your question was, when were the obligations to commence? And that was in 2007. And up until 2018, we've constantly been reviewing and discussions with the city. And up until two thousand and eighteen, we've constantly been reviewing and discussions with the city. And, and everyone has been working, you know, according, in, more or less in response to different challenges. Be it the economy in two thousand and eight, up through the first part of starting the business, through the weather, you know, decimating our ridership. We dropped from twenty-two thousand in two thousand and eleven down to five thousand in two thousand and nineteen. Does that answer your question, council, councilman?
Yes, thank you.
Thank you. Other questions or comments? Councilmember Adams?
Thank you. I guess this is just more of a comment in general is that, obviously, this is a, a fifteen-year term. Um, we do have, you know, clearly, uh, material breaches here. But I also think in general, you know, because of that, we, you know, we also need to review, you know, is what was in here, what we determined at that time, is that still the desired goal for that area? Um, and, and either way, if it is, I think this, you know, shows us, i- i- this is the opportunity for us to reevaluate this and then, you know, allow this, this contract to end, reevaluate our needs at that area. What is it that we do want to have accomplished there? And then, um, again, I guess establish what would be an RFP process of which, of course, uh, I assume, uh, Greenheart LLC could also participate in that process. Would that be correct?
That's correct.
Um, so for me, I think that that would be the prudent way to go, considering how much time has passed, um, that those, um, it has been so much time since those original obligations were asked of. And I don't, it doesn't seem as though they have been rereviewed. They certainly were never started upon. So I, I see that as being, allowing us the opportunity to re-review this as, as a whole and then kind of start from scratch and, and go from there.
Thank you. Other questions or comments? Um, you know, certainly there are hardships, uh, the Great Recession, two thousand and eight, although this proposal was submitted in two thousand and seven, uh, when things were pretty well-known to be going south with the Great Recession. But as councilmember Adams mentioned, uh, this has been fifteen years. And I believe there have been other concessions made from the original contract. Is that correct, Mr. Tetter?
That's correct. Specifically, the financial arrangement is the major one, where it went from a fixed fee plus a rider fee to just the rider fee. So currently, um, there's, there's no payment, um, unless there's riders.
So, I mean, to put it succinctly, this concept has never functioned. Uh, it was a concept that was put out there, but it had to be modified because it simply wasn't working. Um, I'm, I'm disappointed also in the fact that, you know, I've asked about, uh, what notice was given to the city by this company, uh, when the pandemic hit? What were their plans for securing, uh, the operations out there? Uh, you know, it's been mentioned this evening that, uh, oh, well, uh, they, they became aware that Nevada has reopened. Well, we've reopened, I, like, six months ago. Uh, this is not news. It's been all over the, the media about Las Vegas reopening, the state of Nevada reopening. I believe this is an opportunity, uh, as councilmember Adams had mentioned, to take another look at everything about what was proposed out there because what had been proposed never occurred and whether that's even desirable uh, for some of our, our, our best open space and recreation area, uh, to be doing all that. The city has provided a significant amount of land, uh, for use by this company. And I think we always need to be careful when we start throwing out these huge pieces of our real estate, uh, how that's being done. So my preference would be, uh, to go ahead with a request for proposal, uh, get, uh, other ideas about this and decide if this project is any type of a good idea. But I don't believe this company has lived up to the original agreement or the concessions that were made over time, uh, because their concept was simply not working. So do we, well, I guess we can ask then if anybody wishes to make a motion on resolution seventy-four sixty-two? Anyone wishing to do that?
Can I comment, please? Would that, could I respond, please?
Sure.
Yeah, I, I think, you know, as, as we said, that we haven't met our obligations. The, the original contract was put together in two thousand and seven. I, I do know that we have generated one point two million in payments to the city. And, and I think that's quite significant. When we, when we talk about facing a lot of, the original history of this project was, uh, a friend of ours, Brent Thompson, was the trail master. And one of the challenges the city was facing was literally paying the salary of the trail master in Bootleg Canyon. So we came at his request to look at how we could assist in generating revenue for this park. And the goal at that time was you have ground trails, bike trails. Why not create direct revenue through aerial trails or zip lines? Which we then invested over a million and a half dollars, taking incredible risk in this project. You know, with the cooperation of Boulder City. We, you know, we own the system on that hill. And that system is a minimum impact system that has brought a hundred and thirty thousand people out to Boulder City. And I, I think, you know, if you, if you know our experience as Greenheart and the amount we've put into the community and, and through donations, that, you know, I, I think we're, we are a very good partner. We're, we're sorry we weren't able to meet all of our obligations. We've been in constant discussions. This idea of us waiting, like all of us, we've been impacted by COVID quite severely as a tourism company and also on a family level through the elements. So, you know, when you stand back and you, you sit on council, you really need to understand some of the history. This, this was not a simple project. This was nothing but an incredible amount of hard work and some wonderful people that we've worked with. And the idea, you know, as you guys look at this as, as an operation, you know, we're, we're sitting back and we were in the, the SBA process to actually be granted the, the necessary funding to make some major improvements, which would allow us to, to return to proper operations because there are safety concerns. The wind is a tremendous issue and we've been working to resolve it. We just haven't woken up to the fact that Vegas is reopened. I mean, we're, we're also a company that, in downtown Las Vegas, we created Fremont Street zip lines and did over three hundred thousand to local charities off that. I, I don't, you know, I'd ask that you would consider our history, who we are, what we're trying to do. Throughout your meeting, you've talked a great deal about preservation and also about conservation. And Greenheart has specifically worked here in Boulder City and other locations exactly around that, how to work with nature, how to generate revenue. And it's a very, you know, I, I think it's a very good approach. I think we have a, a good relationship with Boulder City. And I believe we can go much further. I, I, you know, I speak to you with our understanding of what is possible. And I, I ask that you reconsider what you're thinking and allow us to continue with our concession and allow us to work with Boulder City.
Thank you. Anyone wishing to make a motion on resolution seventy-four sixty-two for renewal of this concession agreement?
Mayor, I will move to deny the renewal of.
I, I, that, that would not be a proper motion. Hey, anyone wishing to make a motion on seventy-four sixty-two? All right, uh, motion, then the resolution dies for lack of a motion. Um, do you need a motion from us, Mr. Tetter, as far as direction on going forward with an RFP?
Uh, no, sir. Uh, we'll follow the, um, outlined process, um, below the recommendation in your packet.
All right, thank you. We'll move then to item number ten, uh, for possible action matters pertaining to airport leases.
Mr. Bryce Bolt, our administrative services director, will, uh, be walking you through the item on, uh, matters pertaining to airport leases.
Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor and Councilman Bryce Bolt, Administrative Services. Item ten has, uh, two items we're seeking direction on. The first item would be direction regarding airport leases expiring over the next six calendar years. And the second item would be seeking direction, uh, to, um, conduct appraisals to determine fair market value. The staff report included a few examples relative to item number one and, uh, portions of the lease for your consideration. Myself and the airport manager, Marissa, who are here to answer any questions.
Thank you. Questions or comments? Councilmember Jorgensen?
Yeah, um, in looking at this, I, I just had a couple of questions, couple of comments. I know that you have three options laid out there. I saw that the first one was to continue like we are right now with the twenty-eight hangers. And I saw that in there we had, um, the profits that we made from bringing in the rent. And you did have some of the expenses. Where do we put the expense for the maintenance that goes into the hangers that we've taken back?
Well, we, uh, we would have airport maintenance under those expenses that we listed.
Who, who's doing the airport hangar maintenance?
Well, we've gotten good cooperation from Public Works for small maintenance issues. And then we've brought in other companies for fixed doors that we're not able to do in-house.
Okay, so that's for twenty-eight. So if we revert and take thirty-seven more and have fifty-plus and eventually one hundred and forty-plus, how is that going to affect the cooperation with the people that are supposed to be doing another job? You know what I'm saying? Um, with Public Works or whatever and being able to be timely and fixing?
Right. I think, uh, if we were up to a hundred and forty, we'd have to relook at our maintenance agreements with outside vendors in a, in-house. Because it would require, uh, it's, it's, the in-house, we'd, we could do a couple of different things there. We're an enterprise fund. We could reimburse Public Works for any major projects they do for us. Um, but if it becomes too much, then there's outside vendors that we'd have to bring in and pay to do and complete our maintenance.
Because I would think with a hundred and forty-plus hangers, you would almost have to hire another person in Public Works to be able to do. You could leave Public Works alone and let them do their job for which they were hired, Public Works.
Right, you could hire another individual to, on airport staff that would have the specialty of, uh, maintenance relative to those.
Because then we'll also have billing and all that that we have to deal with, right?
I'm sorry?
You'll also have to fill out the billing, figure out billing, um, and, and monthly cost. So the other question that I had then along with that is if we did that option, it seems to me that we have some concerns when a large portion of, become available. We're going to have costs that go out. So I don't know if the profit-loss report that we're seeing really is, um, enough for us to make a determination, I guess I could say, right? So what I would like to see, and I, I know you were talking about fair market value. I guess I'd kind of like to see a, um, option one, fair market value, cost, benefit, loss kind of statement. An option two, and an option three. Option two, for those who aren't aware of it, um, is to extend the leases for three to five years. If it's my understanding, I don't know, um, I don't know if FAA rules supersede NRS rules or not when it goes to hangar ownership and you can only do three to five years. I, I don't know how that works exactly. Maybe you could check into that for us. But I saw the three to five-year option being based on that, the NRS rule that, um, says that if we don't do that, we have to take it and make it available for everyone. We have to do a, a process, right? Could you be more specific for us on that?
Yes, I mean, e- essentially, fe- federal law, um, preempts to the extent that it, that it governs. I don't know that there, there, the state laws that we're referring to are state requirements with respect to city-owned land. And so I, I don't believe in, and in general, federal contracting is generally required to be competitive. So I don't know that there's really any conflict here that, that there would be a preemption. Um, but we can certainly, um, I, I look into that further. Um, I'm sorry, what was the second part of your question?
Yeah, so I guess I would like to see the validity of that, those two compared, so that I would know which one we need to follow, so that if we are, um, within the constraints of three to five-year contract lease renewals or if we could do greater. And then we could look at the profit-loss benefit for that too. And the liability too, of us not having to take care of it, not having to hire and put someone on benefit on top of salary, all the things that go into that. And then the third option I see is a property manager. And again, taking money in, but putting money out, um, to be able to have it managed because it's a large amount. So I guess kind of, when I look at this, I'd like to see a win-win for the airport down there. I know that we have reverted those one, um, original twenty-eight. I don't believe that that means that we have to take back all of them. I think that there are options like you've given us here and we should look at them very seriously. Um, we've, we've taken things in the past back, uh, thinking that we would do a great job and it, it hasn't quite worked out for us, right? The fuel farm, for instance. So I, I, and we're going to send that out for RFPs, which I think is smart. Uh, so I, I guess I would like to see you come back with profit-loss on each of these. And I also would like to see option two, um, the rules, whether the FAA supersedes, um, NRS or how that works for us being able to do, um, our long-term leases. If it truly is a three to five, or if we could offer something more.
Okay, very good.
Thank you. Councilmember Bridges?
Yes, thank you very much. Okay, having gone through this before. This is a rehash, uh, of the last go-around. The, uh, lease agreement, the originals were pretty clear that, uh, after twenty years plus one ten, ten-year extension, uh, the hangers revert back to the ownership of the city. The reverse, upon termination and the, the lease terminates after thirty years. That being said, what we're being offered, I just want to make sure I'm clear, is, uh, right now with the previous leases, are they all month-to-month? The first group that reverted?
Yes, they are.
Okay, so, um, was there a discussion of a three to five-year, uh, option in terms of renting, leasing the hangers? Post-termination of the current leases, we have new lease agreements with the tenants. And one is month-to-month, one is a three-year agreement with a two-year option. That is not an extension of the current lease. That is a new lease agreement where they're paying rent to the city. But it's triple-net. So we do not cover the, the costs of maintenance.
Yes.
Correct. And, uh, however, the rent would be lower. We, we have a higher level of rent. And then the property manage, management was the same, that post-termination of the lease, then a property manager comes and sort of manages the whole deal. But we're still renting the hangers to the occupants.
Yes.
Okay. So what we need to do next, that the leases expire or terminate, is we have to get, um, appraisals, right? Correct?
Yes, certainly for twenty-three, the ones that revert in twenty-three, an appraisal, timely appraisal so that we can determine fair market value.
Okay, now the appraisal package, will that include what the options, what, what we should be charging as a monthly rent, uh, as it currently stands? Or, and will it include what the monthly rent would be, assuming triple-net?
That would be the, RFP would outline that scope, yes.
Okay, so the, w- once we have the two, we have to have two appraisals, is that?
It, it has been our practice to have two appraisals.
Okay, so the two appraisals, we then have, we ask them an appraisal where we take care of all the insurance and maintenance, uh, for the property. And the other is the triple-net?
Yes.
Okay. That, I just wanted to be sure that I understand, um, so, um, and if we go with the three-year agreement with the two, is that now, do we have to have competitive op, options for other people? is that now, do we have to have competitive options for other people, rather than, say, the current tenant? Wouldn't just be able to stay well where they are, we'd have to offer it to anybody who wants that particular hangar?
And I will defer to the city attorney, but my understanding is that no, that due to the short, the duration of that particular agreement, you wouldn't have to send it off for RFP.
Yes, there's an exception in state law to the competitive bidding requirement for leases under 25,000 square feet.
Okay.
And they can be three years in length with one two-year renewal term for a total of five years.
For a total of five years, okay. And that, that is a new lease that includes land and improvement.
Yeah, and I would say that's the safest option as far as, as far as, as far as whether the state law applies because of federal law preempts it. I do know that airports have the ability to choose how long their lease terms are. So I do know that if the city council were to move forward with the shorter-term lease, we would be compliant with both federal and state law.
Okay, that's it. I think those are my questions.
Thank you. With regard to that, to this three-five thing and what's in the NRS, that allows for, you've mentioned that an appraisal isn't required, but at least for the 15 minutes I had to look at it before the meeting in receiving that message, the council would have to show that there is some benefit to the community so that we do not have to have an appraisal. Otherwise, you need an appraisal.
The appraisal is required by our city charter as well. And so that's where the appraisal requirement comes from, in addition to state law.
Right, so that exception for the state law is, in addition to that, you have to show that there is a benefit to the community by not charging what would be considered fair market value. That's my reading of what was sent late this afternoon.
Yes, I'm saying that the city charter independently requires an appraisal.
Right, so we have two different.
So I think the appraisal is required, and I think the appraisal would still be required.
And fair market value would need to be established, and that's what the city charter requires. There is some exception in the state law, but not to our city charter.
That's right.
Okay. And also, you know, a lot of times discussions are revolving around FAA regulations or whatever. At least in my experience, and Marissa or Madam City Attorney, maybe one of, you can either confirm or correct this. What the FAA does is they give you a bunch of money over time, and those are called grant assurances. And if you get sideways with something the FAA doesn't like, they can start calling that money due back to them. So what it does is put us on the hook for millions of dollars if we don't comply with what the FAA wants us to do. Is that a correct assumption of what grant assurances are and how the FAA enforces what their whims are?
Certainly, if you accept a grant and there are certain assurances associated with that grant, and you don't meet those assurances, absolutely, they could come back and ask for those grants back.
Okay, and my understanding is one of those guidelines from the FAA is you do not provide property on an airport for less than what a fair market value would be for an extended period of time.
I think that's an overall guideline of the FAA is if they're going to give you money, you should at least make an attempt to make money as an enterprise.
Okay, and one of the other guidelines of the FAA is there is no private ownership on a FAA-funded airport.
That's true. It'd be long-term leases or rentals, but there's no private ownership on a municipal airport.
And the reason I think that's important is we frequently hear about how there are individuals who own hangars. They do not own the hangar. No one owns anything at the airport other than the city as regard to real property. Buildings, runways, that's all actually the property of the airport. But due to lease terms, someone may have control of that property for some period of time.
I believe that would be a correct assumption that any fixed asset on that land, it's the city's land.
Okay, and that's what the leases say, is they don't say that the city sold land or the ability for someone to go in and own something on there. These were always lease agreements where the city originally agreed to say, you may come, you may build a hangar or more, or several hangars in exchange for some lease money. And then at the end of the lease term, the value of those hangars would belong to the city because of consideration of a lower rent over the course of the lease.
Yes, sir.
That's the reversion clause.
Yes, sir.
Okay. How, I didn't see in the two leases that are coming up, what was the monthly amount? It refers to it being set by resolution of the council. And it also seems that the terms of those never allowed for an increase in lease payments over the entire 30-year period of the lease other than increases in the Consumer Price Index.
I don't have that specific number, so I'll defer to the airport manager, Ms. Adoo.
Good evening. I don't have the exact price, what it's leased out for right now on those properties, but it was set by resolution and it wasn't increased since it was established by resolution.
So essentially, it was flat-lined over the 30-year period other than incremental increases due to the Consumer Price Index? That's the way it appears to read to me.
Correct.
Okay, but we don't know what that monthly rate was?
I don't have that number with me tonight.
Okay, thank you. You know, another thing, another term that is frequently used is, well, we'll extend the leases. And again, I believe that Councilmember Bridges has addressed that. There is no extension available of these current leases. There are no terms within the lease for another extension. They've already received a 10-year extension, and there are no other terms. It's very clear that at the end of that, the lease is over with and the buildings revert to the city.
Yes, sir.
Okay, so again, I think it's important that when we talk about, well, we'll just extend it for a period of time. The leases are coming due next year, and there is no provision within those leases to say, oh, we'll just go a little bit longer on them. The lease is very clear. It ends. The deal was that it would be a 30-year period of time, and then the value of those hangars would belong to the city after that.
Yes, sir.
Okay. With these options that have been presented, I'm assuming the property manager option that's being referred to here is sometimes referred to as a master leaseholder, or?
It could be that. They could formally an HMO, or it'd be a property manager that, that we contract with. That's what they do is airport property management.
Okay, so it may be where that's just a flow-through, where there's some lease amount that's agreed upon or determined. They collect that, take whatever they're owed, or they get paid some set amount, and then the remainder of it goes into the enterprise fund.
Yes, sir.
Okay, because again, I know there's confusion about how these different arrangements may work. And so the property manager wouldn't necessarily be a master leaseholder, is that correct?
No. They wouldn't necessarily have to be the master leaseholder. They could be under contract with the city to manage that.
To manage them, all right. And we don't have a figure then on what the difference between, we're now over a year since the reversion, actually, I guess we're coming up on two years of the reversion of the first set of hangars that were built. But we don't know what that difference between income and expense has been at this time?
I believe we did have a chart in the report. They gave us the last two years. So the first year, that being July 2020 to June 2021, and the hangar net rent, or the hangar rental net, and that's after maintenance expenses, utilities, was $123,358.22. This fiscal, I'm sorry, the fiscal year we're currently in, we're currently at, the maintenance cost of fire monitoring repair was $125,000. So that knocks our projection down to about $51,000. And we're budgeted for next fiscal year. And it depends on what option we go with with respect to the expenses and revenues.
All right, and at least at this point, there has been no need to hire additional staff?
No, sir.
Everything's being handled by the staff that was there prior to the reversion occurring?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Is it anticipated, has there been any review of whether additional personnel would be needed after these leases expire next year?
So on 23, that would double ours, and again, depending on the option, if we went with just the, as we're running it now, month-to-month with staff doing the bulk, it would, it would certainly stretch us a little bit thinner, and we'd have to make an assessment, I think, after that year with respect to the time that we put into it. There is certainly a consumption of our staff's time, but at first, we anticipated about 25% of a full-time person to do the billing and so on and so forth. And I think we're a little higher than that now, but, so we'd look at probably be 50% when we go to this next year. And we'd have to start making some assessments about staffing.
All right. With these amounts then that come in, what happens with that money?
With the rental money?
Yes.
It's processed through finance and it's put in our enterprise fund.
And again, the definition of an enterprise fund in Nevada is something that is devoted to a particular purpose and that must be self-sustaining. In other words, the revenue that is generated stays with that operation, but it must be sufficient to cover that operation.
Yes, sir.
So lowering revenue in any way could lead to issues with the sustainability of an enterprise fund?
It certainly could.
Okay, so it's not as though we have some pot of endless money that we can use for assistance to tenants at the airport. That airport has to make enough money to be run by the professionals that run it and to be able to sustain itself maintenance-wise and all of that into the future.
Absolutely, and I'd love to have a little reserve, too, just in case.
Always want a little reserve. I agree with you. When the first group of hangars did revert to the city, those, my recollection, the lease that was determined was that each tenant in a hangar was offered to continue to be in that hangar.
Yes, sir.
Okay, but we do have a waiting list of people who would like to get a hangar at the airport.
Yes, sir, we do.
And I think I saw something that's over 100?
Yes, sir, 120, I believe, or a little bit more.
Okay. But again, the people who were there, the pilots that were there as tenants, were offered first choice to continue to be in that hangar as a tenant, but go to a month-to-month lease rather than the 30-year lease that had expired.
Yes, sir.
Okay. And with these leases, too, you know, there's a terminal down there, there are FBOs that have large structures down there. Those also have reversion clauses, correct? So at some point, that terminal will become, the value will revert to the city.
Yes, sir.
Okay, same with the fixed-based operator buildings and operations that they have?
Yes, sir.
So that's normal for airports.
Yes.
Because again, the FAA does not provide for private ownership of real property.
Yes.
One other thing that has come up in consideration of the revenue to be generated at the airport are the legal expenses that have been incurred by that enterprise fund. And I do think it's important to point out that this litigation that's been initiated by tenants at the airport, once again, that is revenue that then has to be raised through some means, whether it's these leases or whatever it is, in order for that enterprise fund to continue on.
Yes, sir. It is an expense. We need to cover it.
Okay, so there has to be some way of increasing revenue to cover for all this litigation that these tenants have initiated against the airport and the city.
Yes, sir.
Right, so again, the point being, enterprise fund, this isn't, should not be, is not supposed to, impact the other residents of Boulder City.
Yes, which we do not mingle with the general fund.
Okay. Well, those are the questions that I have at this point. Any other questions? Councilmember Jorgensen?
Yes, I had a few more questions. I saw in there that you have down fair market rental rate. Now, I know we've talked about the appraised value of the hangar. When you figure out a fair market rental rate, do you figure in, so say that we leased a new lease, so that we can say that, back a hangar to someone for a three, maybe two years long or five? Do we take into consideration if they're paying, not just, they're paying the insurance for it, they're doing their maintenance for it, they're doing all those things? Do we take that into account when we look at what we charge them then in that case? And then do we look at other airports, maybe in the valley and/or somewhere else that are doing like things, and see what they currently are doing so that we understand how that process looks for them, so we kind of get an idea for ourselves?
Yes, and I think those elements, some of those elements will be captured in a thorough appraisal. And then, you know, you have your fair market value, and it'd be offset by whatever expenses are part of your triple-net.
Okay, and then I just want a point of clarification. So we're saying that every single cost of litigation that occurs at the airport comes from the airport fund. None of it will come from risk management?
That is correct.
That is our, in discussions with the finance director, that is the city's position that it has to be paid by the enterprise fund.
Okay, and then money's going into the enterprise fund. If we look at bringing those back and bringing in this money, I know that prior to this, that the enterprise fund never went below balance and that it was running fine without this income. And so I guess, again, I would say, let's look at the cost, you know, and the profit in a realistic way for all three options, actually, so that we can understand which option actually is the best for the city considering time, energy, hiring someone new, and/or liability, like I said before, so that we can understand if the money's coming in is as much of a benefit as the cost of us having it, whether it be through labor or other things.
Certainly, staff can do that analysis.
Okay, and, yeah, and I think since you gave us these three options, and you asked us, should we do a fair market value evaluation? In my opinion, yes, we should do one. And then we should include in that each of the accommodations and/or non-accommodations that would be made based on the responsibility of the hangar owner at that time, depending on what we enter into with them. Stating that we would do the maintenance for him, or we would pay insurance, or we would do whatever, then clearly, their rent would be higher if we brought those back versus if we renewed a lease. Or didn't renew, we wrote a new lease. And then my question, another question that I had, do we know, I know that we said the FAA has a maximum number of years that we can do leases. I do know that. Do you know the number of years for that? Is it 50?
I believe, once again, that the FAA does not have a rule that says I, I believe once again that the FAA does not have a, a rule that says this is it. Um, what they do is they put guidelines out there and fifty is the most they want to see and they're not eager to see that length. Um, but if you go over that-
Okay, so with that being said-
And the assurances may be jeopardized.
Okay, with that being said, what I guess I would like to see too is the rules from the FAA stating exactly their lease rules, so that we can understand clearly. A- and then also from you, Brittany, to understand where we fit in that picture. Where does our charter fit with the FAA? Because we have taken on significant loans or significant grants from the FAA, none of which we want to have to pay back. And so I don't want to supersede that in any way, so that we start having to revert to paying back monies that we receive from them.
Sure, I, I, I can say with, uh, confidence that, um, by offering a competitive process uh, for leasing the property or the short-term leases, that we would not be violating federal law.
Okay, I'd like to see that.
Whether, um, or not state law is preempted in general by federal law, I, I'd have, there'd have to be a memo written and, and significant research done. I think it'd be a novel question. I don't think these state statutes have ever been challenged in that, uh, context. And so even if we did an opinion, it would be the law firms kind of best guess, um, you know, based on what other jurisdictions, that, that there could be other case law in other jurisdictions that have dealt with this issue, I don't know. But, but I could say with confidence that, like, local government, um, has the ability to, um, offer these leases on, on, on terms.
Right, I saw that.
Such a competitive process or, or five-year terms. So I can say with confidence that each of these three options would not violate, um, federal law. I did want to add, there was a comment made about, uh, the revenue of the airport. I do want to just point out that the, the airport has received a significant amount of CARES Act funding that has helped us, uh, helped the airport through the past couple of years. Um, and that, that is the reason, a, a, a significant reason why, uh, the airport's been able to sustain. Um, so I just wanted to point that out.
Right, and that has a lot to do with COVID and the, um, i- i- it being impacted because of, um, tourism. So that is, and that was a perfect place for the CARES Act and that was exactly what the federal government intended through those loans, was to be able to keep airports and, uh, businesses like that afloat or being able to stay afloat during a time when we had to shut down as a complete country. I guess I would like to actually see the verbiage in both, um, the state and the FAA rules concerning leases in the packet when we, when it comes back.
I, I don't know that we've made a determination on return, but, uh, council member Bridges?
I think you, I think you had asked a question about the, what we were previously charging. Uh, I saw in one of the leases that it was twenty-three cents per square foot per year. And what is the average, uh, square foot measurement of a hangar?
They're all a little bit different, but-
I know, but is it five thousand, seven thousand, four thousand?
Are they about, um, fifteen to seventeen hundred square feet?
Oh, fifteen or seventeen hundred? So even at two thousand, we were making about four hundred and sixty dollars a year in rent on the property, but nothing on the buildings. So the buildings were being sold, bought and sold, but, um, so we have been paying, receiving four hundred, about four hundred and sixty dollars a year on these, on these hangers. So, um, there's, I, I'm just curious, in terms of, uh, I, I know that people weren't thrilled when, with the last reversion, but do people seem relatively, um, accepting of a month-to-month? Has there been more requests for, uh, longer-term leases, like the three years with the two-year extension? Uh, what does the demand seem to be or is this, is that sort of a, uh, just a discussion?
The hundred and twenty, uh, on the waiting list know it's month-to-month. So that may be some indicator as to the attractiveness of that. Uh, I don't know if we've had requests, nothing that's been brought to my attention of a, of a large nature relative to longer.
Okay, and then with the, again, I think I go back to the question of would the appraisal include, uh, the difference between a, a month-to-month rental with the air, airport picking up the costs of maintenance and insurance versus the triple net?
Yeah, and, and again, we, when we seek an appraiser, we, we put those parameters and see if they could give us a fair market value and what that would translate into a triple net or just a month-to-month.
Okay, and they do do the comparisons. As I recall, the last time we looked at the appraisal, we went through this process, that the appraisal document was quite comprehensive and included, uh, lease, lease rates from a number of states and local cities and, and other, uh, small GA airports.
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Yes.
Thank you, any other questions or comments? Councilmember Farr?
Yeah, since, you know, you guys are there dealing with this, you know, the airport every day, um, what do you think isn't, uh, the best option out of the three, since, you know, you guys are there every day dealing with it?
Well, really, of course, we would, uh, go with any option council sees fit, including any that's not mentioned. Um, I, I think with respect to the relationships, uh, and the current tenant owners, the three, two would at least, uh, give some, uh, assurance that they'd be able to stay in that hangar and with something of elongated, uh, rental agreement.
Thank you.
Thank you, anyone else? Member Adams?
Thank you, I mean, nineteen ninety-three was a different year than twenty twenty-two, you know? Uh, to just, you know, to think that we can just, uh, move forward and renew, uh, as, as is, it's just, it's just unrealistic. Uh, just to clarify, when we're talking about getting an appraisal done, we can get the appraisal done and it can tell us essentially on both terms. So whether or not we're, we're wanting to direct with the three-to-five-year lease or the month-to-month, we could essentially request an appraisal be done and get information back for potentially both of those options.
That would certainly be how we'd present our RFP and that would be part of how we would judge the success or proposal, is that we would seek that they be able to provide that type of, uh, analysis and information, yes.
So I guess the question is here because, you know, obviously we were asked to give direction on what seems, well, which, which direction would we like to head? It, it seems that there's, uh, at least an openness to at least the first two options. I haven't heard much discussion about too much interest in the third. I guess I would ask, do we feel open enough to, uh, is there, is it enough direction for us to say that, um, we're interested in these first two options and then from there, um, seeing what information is provided back to us and making a decision further at that point?
Absolutely. That's council's druthers and we can certainly follow those directions.
Are you finished?
That's all my comments, ma'am.
Thank you. Um, you know, I, I think that no matter what is done, a fair market value must be established, whether that's due to our city charter, um, and clearly the city charter was written, um, so that we didn't do things like that, uh, so that we didn't provide value to people that was not at fair market value. Uh, whatever term anybody wants to apply to it, um, it was supposed to be fair market value that applied to everyone. Uh, whatever state law may have in it, uh, at least the portion that I was able to read, um, it starts talking about value to the community. And that gets to be very nebulous and who's determining that? Well, guess what, we get to determine a lot of things up here, but, uh, somebody's always going to question how we arrived at whatever decision gets arrived at. So I think without fail, um, the step that needs to be done is determine a fair market value. Uh, the calculation that council member Bridges did, uh, meant that we, the city, the airport fund was receiving less than forty dollars a month, uh, for the lease of a two thousand square foot building, uh, or approximately two thousand square foot building. Um, that was the reason why a thirty-year lease was issued, to say that over the course of that time, whoever built those hangers would get their money back, make some type of fair profit, and then the value that was residual with the buildings would become, uh, the property of the city. So we need to determine what that value is at this point. And then whatever terms of the lease might be, whether it's three years plus two, or three years, or one year, or one month, or thirty years, um, that all falls after an appraisal of the value of those buildings, a, accurate appraisal of that. Uh, my recollection, when we did this on the first set, um, was we were told, this council was told, uh, we could not deviate whatsoever, uh, from the appraisal that had been given, even though the appraisal was given, uh, with a range of value and not one particular value, which is common for appraisals, they normally will provide a range. Uh, however, something was picked out and said, that's the only number you can use. So I don't know if anything's changed, but that's the way the, uh, first set of hangers was dealt with.
Uh, well, if the appraisal gives us a range again, council could consider that. I believe that there'd be-
I do think the appraisal would be different depending on which option.
Well, I'm sure it could be, and I, I think that needs to be part of the RFP, uh, to say, if it's this, if it's this, if it's this, what is that? But we need to know what that value is and not just get a value, say, based on a month-to-month and then say, oh, well, we'll take that value and we'll go, uh, three plus two, or three alone, or thirty, or whatever it is. Um, if there's going to be consideration of different lease term ranges, uh, I believe that needs to be part of the RFP.
So we'd have appraisal, well, they'd only have an RFP, um, if we did a property management company, so they're just a-
I think he means the appraisal, uh, the RFP for the appraisal?
Correct.
Yes, sir.
Why would we do an RFP?
Uh,
So we get qualified appraisers?
We wouldn't have to do an RFP, you could do it by motion this evening, but our common practice has been to run an RFP for appraisals.
I see. Yeah, so, uh, just for clarification, it would be for all the, from what you're saying there, all three options would be included?
Well, I think that needs to be part of the RFP, that when an appraisal company responds to it, they would understand that they're going to be asked, uh, to evaluate it based on different lease lengths.
Yeah, I think we could just put that on a RFP, that fair market value is applied to a triple net, is applied to a month-to-month and is applied to a management company consideration.
All right, any other questions or comments? Well, that would be my motion then, is that staff prepare an RFP, requesting responses from qualified appraisal companies who are capable of providing appraisals based on the various lease lengths.
Second?
All those in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Anything else you need from us this evening?
That, that'll keep us busy.
I, I think so.
Thank you, sir.
Thanks very much for the information, Ms. Adoo. Again, appreciate all the work that goes into this. All right, item number eleven for possible action, discussion and direction regarding a request for statement of qualifications for civil litigation services. Madam City Attorney?
Um, thank you, Mayor and City Council. Uh, this item is seeking discussion and direction regarding a request for statement of qualifications for civil litigation services. Um, as you know, the city is a member of the Nevada Public Agency Insurance Pool and the Public Agency Compensation Trust. This, uh, agency provides risk management services and general liability coverage to the city, including some legal defense for certain claims like tort claims, personal injury, property damage, things like that. For litigation that's not covered by our policies such as non-employment, breach of contract claims, civil rights claims or equitable claims, the city often has to rely on outside counsel for defense. Um, because the city attorney's office consists of, uh, one attorney and, and one contract criminal prosecutor, uh, as well as paralegal, uh, we often rely on the assistance of outside counsel. And, uh, a lot of times, and it's been discussed more recently, that, uh, this outside counsel is costly. Um, you know, even large cities with several attorneys on staff retain outside counsel and, um, some will, will also pay high rates, especially if it's a special, uh, specialized area of law. In twenty nineteen, twenty twenty, before I was appointed, uh, the city was sued by several, several entities for these types of claims that were not covered under our policy. And as a result of these multiple suits, um, the city had to engage the services of outside counsel. Again, some of these higher costs were warranted due to the specialty and complex nature of litigation. But in looking forward, uh, if we, if we are sued in the future, which we very likely will be as a government entity, uh, that we are often sued, um, I, I thought it would be helpful to seek a list of qualified and, and capable law firms that were willing to do work for the city at a set rate. Um, so this would seek that list and as a response, uh, in responding to the, the request, they would be indicating that they're willing to agree to our, to limits of a two-twenty per hour, one-seventy-five per hour for associates, uh, two-twenty would be for a partner, and ninety dollars for a paralegal. Um, then, once we procure this list, in the event the city faces litigation, uh, the city, city staff would bring back the retainer agreement, using, pick, choosing a law firm from this list that, that's eligible or, um, uh, and, uh, would bring a retainer agreement for city council's approval. Um, again, this is a cost-saving man, uh, measure, um, to help reduce the costs of civil litigation in the future. And so I hope, uh, you, you will consider approving it.
Thank you, questions or comments? Councilmember Jorgensen?
I saw in the paperwork that you gave us that we've recently paid as much as three-fifty to five-fifty an hour for a partner. So I, I do think that this is a great idea in that we could reduce these fees. So, um, with that being said, would we, um, no longer use the firms that we currently are using at that rate? Would we be done with those firms?
No, this wouldn't affect our current lawsuits and current litigation. This would just be, uh, for, if we are sued again going forward.
Then what stops us from using them in the future at such a high rate? Cause I, I think it would be beneficial to use it.
Well, we, if the city council wants to consider, um, uh, our agreements with other firms, that we could definitely agendize that and talk about that at another date. Um, but this is, this wouldn't, uh, it, it wouldn't impact that, um, because this would be getting a list for the future.
Once we have that list, though, we could use them?
Yeah.
For current things?
If the city council wishes.
Okay.
Thank you, other questions or comments? Councilmember Adams?
I just, I think this is a, a, a very, uh, this is a very prudent way to go. I, I really appreciate you bringing this board to us to, uh, to address this issue, thank you.
Thank you, other questions or comments? Um, again, I, I think this certainly would have been helpful, uh, to have had something like this in the past. Uh, you know, the previous city attorney never approached city council about retention of any outside firms. Uh, there was never any consideration by the council of whether to even retain outside counsel. Uh, the former city attorney just did that. Uh, so I, I think that was highly inappropriate, I think it's a violation of the charter language. Uh, clearly this is a way that we can have a pre-approved or at least, uh, pre-cleared set of firms that we can look at. Um, I do think it's important to note too that, and you've already said it, uh, these rates could change depending on the litigation that's presented, is that correct?
If there was a need for specialized, uh, attorneys, if there was a, if there was a specialized area of law, then city staff may recommend somebody that's not on this list, um, due to that need, but ultimately the decisions with city council. Uh, and that is common in other cities, um, with their specialized, um, complex litigation, they can, they do pay as high as five-fifty an hour.
Okay, um, and the, the issue that can be, uh, encountered with changing firms is And the, the issue that can be encountered with changing firms is, you're now going to pay a, a new law firm to review all of the case up to that point, and they will be charging for that.
That is typically, if a new law firm is chosen to take on an existing case, there is a charge for the new law firm to get up to speed. That is typical.
All right. Any other questions or comments? I would make a motion then directing the city attorney to proceed with obtaining a statement of qualification for city civil litigation services as described in her staff report.
Second?
I'll take the second this time.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Thank you, Madam City Attorney. Item twelve, city manager's report. Mr. Teder?
Good evening, Mayor and council members. Tonight before you are the claims paid and financial report for April of 2022, and I have no items of note to report this evening, but I'm here for any questions you might have.
Thank you. Any questions or comments from council members regarding the city manager's report? All right. Thank you. Brings us to item thirteen, public comment. This is our final public comment period. During this period, speakers may speak on any subject. They will have up to five minutes to do so, and as always, we ask that people be civil and concise in their comments. Is there anyone in chambers that would like to speak in public comment? Please state your name.
My name's Mike Hickey. I live at fourteen-twenty Pueblo Drive, Boulder City, Nevada. I own a hangar in Boulder City. I bought it twenty-two years ago off the plat map. One of the reasons I purchased it and moved to Boulder City was because of its availability. I didn't have to get on a waiting list. I had to move, and we chose Boulder City for the environment, raised my children here, have two outstanding children from this community, both valedictorian of their class, and, and both awesome kids, computer engineers now. Anyway, so one of the problems I have that was not stated was option four, and that it's just a simple lease extension of the current lease. You've said that it's not, that private property is not available at an airport, when in fact it absolutely is. I grew up in Helena, Montana, and every eight years, they extend the lease. It's private land. It, it's public, it's public land, it's owned by the airport, but every eight years, they renew the lease. They change the, the lease value, what it costs to have the lease, but the buildings are still private. The same thing is true here in Boulder City. I get a personal property tax bill every year from the state of Nevada for my hangar in Boulder City. Now, for some reason, as you say, it's not mine, it's not private, but yet, the state of Nevada thinks it is, and you just, you guys had an option, when you reverted the last ones, to do improvements on the hangars. This is one of the proposals, was to improve the hangars for lease extension. I just got a bill for a thousand dollars from the city of Boulder City to repair the smoke detectors in my hangar. The next thing that is going to happen is that I'm retired now. When I purchased the hangar, I was fully employed as an airline captain, and now I'm retired, so I'm quote, on a fixed income. Now, when I get that hangar back, the amount of money that it costs, it costs me about, about a hundred dollars a month now, cloudy, for my land lease for that hangar. It's not twenty-nine, or, you know, a hundred bucks a month. Plus, the electricity is fifteen dollars a month, plus the insurance, plus, you know, all the things that go with it, and the maintenance. I do all the maintenance on it, exception of the fire thing that was a thousand dollars per hangar. Sixty-two, sixty-four hangars got a thousand dollar bill, basically, that you, the city would have had to paid for if it wasn't, you know, that's not, he didn't mention that, these guys didn't mention that. So they got three options. The fourth option is simply extend the, the hangar, existing leases for improvement on the hangar. The FAA says fifty years. That is the, what, what they're talking about is that, that is the expected lifespan of a metal building, probably in South Florida somewhere. Here, it'll be two-hundred years, that building. If we painted the roofs for an extension, painted the floor for an extension, painted the exterior of the building for an extension, installed, it could be anything, insulation, anything like that, improvements on the building to get another, a ten-year extension. And you could do a rolling ten years, this, and raise the land lease as necessary to see fit if you need some, excuse me, some revenue from this. The, and, and I think everybody that owns a hangar out there was in agreement that if, if you did raise the, the rent on the land, we would be acceptable, amenable to that, or amiable to it, because we were, I mean, that, that hangar didn't appear for free. I paid for it. I bought it outright for a very sizable chunk of money. And it, obviously, it's not a happy place to build a hangar, because nobody's built one in thirty years. I don't understand why that hasn't happened, why either the city hasn't built it, you've got a people hundred on a waiting list. What's going to happen to me is that when my rent goes up, you have stated in the last lease agreement that you may not sublease. My hangar's big enough for four airplanes. So now I'm going to be charged per square foot for a hangar that is capable of four airplanes in it, and I won't be able to afford to rent my own hangar, based on the square footage that you guys are talking about from the, the appraisals. Anyway, that's about it. That's all I've got, and I'll send everybody a, a copy of the forty-year proposed extension that I have from Brock Armentrot, and I'll get a copy to everybody, and that was quite a few years ago. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Please state your name.
Kurt Fallow. Just really quick, and in the interest of time, I'm going to go over a couple of my notes here. First of all, for the benefit of the city attorney, FAA absolutely trumps anything the city can do in terms of their laws, their rules, trumps the city's rules, and you'll find, we've been told that in this room by FAA officials. Secondly, I agree with Mike, hangar ownership, we definitely own those hangars, we've been charged property tax, personal property tax, and my lease, in fact, says I must remove my personal property when this lease is over. We also have been told in this chamber, for your benefit, Mrs. Bridges, that by city's own council, that any agreement can be amended by any two parties who agree to amend it. So we all know that's true. Second thing, or another thing really quick, yeah, FBO hangars and leases have been extended to Boulder City already. The FBOs, the airlines, those guys have all been extended already. Another thing, the grant assurances require that, that the airport be self-sustaining, but that it does not exceed its expenses in terms of its income, because the FAA's whole purpose is to promote aviation, is not to make Boulder City rich, and they'll, they're very clear with that. And Councilman Adams, you are right. Times are very much different today than they were in nineteen ninety-three, and this is where I'd like to talk about what an interesting evening this has been. Times are also a lot different today than they were in nineteen thirty-one. In nineteen thirty-one, this town was built with the intent to be tore down, to be done, just as was said earlier, as we talked about these, this preservation stuff. It was intended for this town to be tore down. Now, all of a sudden, it's of utmost importance, isn't it, to have committees, to work like a dog, to try to protect these buildings in order to protect Boulder City, in order to bring people to Boulder City who want to come here? And yet, at the same time, we're destroying an airport down here by taking the hangars from their owners. Not that it isn't legal to do, it's just not smart to do, and I'll get to that in just a minute. We've talked about this many times before. It's legal to do, probably, but it's not smart. And, and so here we talk about all these committees and everything so that we can protect Boulder City, right? Mayor's told us two or three times tonight that these, these ordinances have been adopted all over the country. Well, I can also tell you that all over the country, people who can revert hangars are not doing it, as Mike says. They're extending them because they know the value that an airport, and pride of ownership, and maintenance, and proper maintenance, and happiness that airports brings to a community. Our airport is, is, is turned into a morgue down there because nobody wants to fly in here. Believe me, and any of these guys back here will, will back me up. I fly all over the country. Nobody wants to come to Boulder City because this is not a friendly place to fly to. The fuel pumps hardly work at all. Every time I go out there and try to get fuel, I can't make it work, so I have to call a truck. We've already run off one of our other FBOs, so there's less competition there, so the prices have gone up. We've run off our, our, our skydiving operation, which brought a lot of people into this town. We're destroying that airport down there because of this unfriendly, we want to get rich attitude here in Boulder City, and we want to be king attitude. It's not working. And the only reason people are down there, because they got no other place to put their dog on airplanes. But nobody wants to fly here. You go to other airports in this country where there's a restaurant, you know, that all town, you go over to Kingman, they got a restaurant in that town. That airport isn't as busy as Boulder City's, but yet, that airport's, that, that restaurant stays busy because people fly there from everywhere to get a bite to eat, to buy some fuel, all this stuff. And people come from town to eat there as well because it's a decent restaurant. This, so there are airports around this country that are that way, and there are airports that are like ours. And by these policies, we're hurting our airport. And just to finish off, I'd like to make one more question, and this is a rhetorical question you don't have to answer, but why don't you take over the flight lines and run it yourselves? Guys, you could make a fortune doing that. Count how many people, a hundred and thirty thousand people over a few years, each of them paying a hundred dollars to ride that flight line. Why don't you do that? You don't do that because you know it's not a good idea to be in that business. You, you didn't even talk about it. All you did was say, we're going to go to RFP with this thing, because you know that it is safer, and better, and less liability for the city to let the private industry take care of that business. Same with the golf courses, you know? The only golf course in this town that makes you money is the one that's run by private industry. And so what I'm saying is it is, maybe it's legal to take those hangars. It might even be legal to take these people's homes that aren't preserving them the way you feel like they need to be preserved. Maybe you could take those homes, maybe you should run them. But you're not going to do that because it doesn't make sense, and that's what I'm telling you about this airport. You can do what you want, but you're going to kill a good airport. And anyway, that's all I've got to say. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Yes, sir. Please state your name.
My name is James Amberall. I'm a Boulder City resident, as well as a hangar owner. I actually own two hangars down there, but they're together, so I actually own one building of two hangars. I pay, again, a hundred dollars a month per hangar. It's a great deal. Appreciate it. It's a deal you made with me, not me with you. I'm paying exactly what you tell me to pay. I would pay a reasonable, fair rate, not some exorbitant rate. You, Mayor, looked at me in the hall after one of these meetings up here and said, you rich people are going to start paying your dues. It's exactly what you said to me, and that's a fact. I know I heard it.
That's incorrect, sir. That's false.
Okay, you can, we can disagree.
And you have your time back for my comments.
Thank you. Good thing. I would expect that same. I will tell you this, I am absolutely beside myself that your employees that work at that airport every single day, you said it yourself, out there every day, can't even give you any better financial information about hangars you took over two years ago. I've run business for thirty-five years. I'm retired for the last ten. I know what it takes to run a business. You talk about triple net leases, that's how I make my living now. I once was a highway contractor. I built roads, bridges, and tunnels all over the southeast for thirty years. So I know a little bit about a lot of different things. You want to take over those leases? That's fine. Don't rent me the land anymore. But as Kurt said, I've been paying personal property tax. In those thirty years, I got some good lawyers. I'm not planning on giving up my personal property, but you've been charging me personal property tax on it. Every single one of those leases per year is different. You can't treat them as one and the same. The language makes sense. The language is the lease. You can't interpret the language on three different leases the same way as you did the new note leases. I implore you to really look at that legal counsel, because it is different. I will tell you this, capital improvements down there, there's nothing in my lease that says I need to pay a thousand more dollars per hangar so you can fix your electrical system that monitors fire in fifty percent of those hangars, not a hundred percent of those hangars. So you want me to pay for a capital improvement that you're going to give me six more years? I got till two thousand and twenty-eight. I'll be back here again, I'm sure, but I got till two thousand and twenty-eight. So if that's a thirty-year program that you want me to pay a hundred percent for, where's my twenty-four years of equity in that fire system that you want me to improve today? This is just, it's crazy, because, again, I look at this and I say, you tell me Parks and Recs have been down there fixing stuff at that hangar? Is that according to that enterprise fund? Where's the accounting for that? Where did Marissa and the other gentleman bring you that information so you, as educated council members, could make a decision? Listen, we want to be fair. Everybody does. I'm a fair person. I don't want to fight, but if all I have to do is all day long, think about all of the things that are going on here, I'm going to come up with a bunch of things that I'm going to have questions about, that then I'm going to probably either choose to or not, or a consortium of us are going to choose to hire somebody to find out the answers. So you want to talk about legal defense? Who paid for that? What fund paid for that recent study that was done two, three years ago that told you that the best thing you could do was renew all these leases that you threw out the door? Did the enterprise fund pay for that? Can anybody tell me? Because it had to do with the airport. Did the enterprise fund pay for that? Nobody wants to answer. I'll find the answer out. I assure you that eventually, if I have to. But again, if you say everything to do with this has to be paid down there, then I will tell you, as a Boulder City citizen, I don't want you to have to go hire extra legal counsel to defend my lawsuit against you. I'm paying the taxes around here. So you got to have all of your ducks in a row. I please, I beg you to, because, again, we can't keep on paying more and more money. And by the way, my airplane costs less than your car, guaranteed. My son just graduated from Embry-Riddle as a second lieutenant in the Air Force to go to pilot training in Gen, in Jept because he flew out of Boulder City Airport. But if I hadn't had the ability to go down there and purchase the hangar ten years ago, and make it work, make it, make sense financially for me to own a cheap, small, little trainer airplane, to stick in that hangar, to propagate my son out of Boulder City High School to become one of the most talented individuals as an aerospace engineer graduate and a second lieutenant in the Air Force with honors in the top ten percent of this country, just, just two weeks ago. If I hadn't had that, so what's going to happen to the next generation of kids that might have a chance to be mentored by men like this, who have built their careers around aviation? If you want rich people to all be down there, take over these hangars. That's what you're going to get, Mayor. I assure you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Please state your name.
I am Katie Kyler. I am terrified of public speaking, but I'm here anyway. I was the president of Boulder City Little League from 2016 through 2021. I currently serve as assistant district administrator for Nevada District Two. We oversee Boulder City Little League and eight other leagues, including Moappa and Virgin Valley, which are small leagues like ours. I am concerned with the decision to take away Veterans Park Field Number Three. I think that the decision was made a little hastily. I think, to answer your question, Councilwoman Bridges, why we weren't speaking up before is because I honestly didn't think that this would ever be on the table. I've worked in Parks and Recreation for a long time myself, for another municipality, and it's just not something that you would think would be a possibility. So I know when the first measure came about and you were considering the outfield of Fields One and Four, even though the report says One and Three, I assume it's One and Four, those are the two little leagues, fields, it made sense. It's unused grass area, we're still able to use the park, the field itself, for play. Taking away Field Number Three, which is primarily used by girls softball, the two fields at Heman Way are not compatible with that. They don't have two-hundred-foot fences. Girls' fast pitch dimensions are a lot different than adult softball, which is what's played at Heman Way. So I've been in youth sports for a long time. Field dimensions are important. The Little League has purchased equipment to make Field Three usable for girls, and the only other suitable fast pitch field in the city is Bravo Field, which is what the high school uses. So during spring season, our girls are not able to use the high school field because it's being used by the high school girls. And I think if we want to remain competitive, we need to facilitate those opportunities, especially for the girls in our community. So I know you saw Boulder City High School girls made it to state again this year, they've been very successful. All those girls have come through the same program we use. Parks and Recreation listed it as Henderson Girls' Softball. That's the organization that the girls play for. They are all Boulder City residents. Parks and Recreation mandates that we sign an affidavit stating that all the girls live in Boulder City in order to use the fields for free. We sign that every year. All those girls either go to school here, or they live here themselves. All those girls either go to school here or they live here themselves. So I think taking a facility away, especially from the girls, would be detrimental. So while you approved, you know, uh, Parks and Rec fees to be waived, which was almost unanimous, you also approved to take away a field from the girls at the same time, if you're trying to promote, um, youth getting outside and youth sports, taking away an entire facility makes little sense. So I just want to advocate, um, for the girls especially, uh, that they really need that field. Thank you.
Thank you. And you did fine, public speaking. Anyone else? Please state your name.
My name is Sam Owens. I, uh, am the current softball coach for the girls here in, in town, the 14-U team. Um, we had plans to offer 16, 14, and 12U, um, in the fall. It's not just a spring sport. It is in the fall also. Um, so, given the fact that we may not have a field, and given the pa, given the fact that in the past I've personally witnessed short to no notice of cancellations and games being moved or canceled or offered to move to Henderson at our own expense, I don't have a lot of faith that, um, during the busy spring season, that the girls that I coached will have an actual field to play on if you remove Field Three. Having said that, I understand the need for a dog park, and quite honestly, I'm going to, um, radiate what, what, uh, Ms. Keller just said. And that is, this is that, had I known that Field Three was on consideration, I probably would have been down here a lot sooner, but I never dreamed that you would take a whole field away and make it that because the city uses that field for tournaments on a regular basis. So the field is getting used way more than what I actually saw was posted last night in previous meetings, um, from Parks and Rec. Having said that, I also wanted to mention that it's very difficult and it, it's not a very healthy relationship between Boulder City Little League and the Parks Department. There's a lot of animosity there. There has been for the eight years that I've been a board member of Boulder City Little League. Um, I don't like it. I don't think that it's beneficial to anyone to have that kind of relationship. As I stated in last night's meeting, I just wish that, um, there would have been some outreach for some input. When it was considered, that I read in the paper, like most citizens here, that Fields One and Four were being considered to have a permanent fence put up, that proposal was made by me in a meeting with Parks and Rec when we were discussing a new lease seven years ago. The lady that just spoke happened to be in the same meeting at that time. And my proposal was, let us put up a permanent fence. We will fundraise for it and pay for it. What happens with the grass on the outside could be used, dual-use by the city and Little League for a place to warm up because as it currently is, Little League has no place to warm up between games, and that becomes a problem. So, looking at it, I just wish that there was a little outreach by the city to get some input for this decision. Because the people that they outreach for happen to be their employees, not the people that are actually using the facility. Uh, one more quick point was is that, um, as it stands right now, there are 10 teams in Little League. Two teams are older teams that use Field Two, so it does not affect them. The other eight teams in Little League use Fields One and Four as it currently is. So, um, if you take Field Three away, you're capping any future growth for Little League. There is not another field in this town that can be put to Little League dimensions. Hemingway can, but the facility itself is not conducive to young kids running around there with all the bricks and high, high, uh, ledges and stuff. So, um, I'm easy to reach. If you wanted more information, you can feel free to contact me. You can contact me through Boulder City Little League, and I would be happy to sit down with any of you or all of you to discuss a remedy for this situation. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Hi, my name is Robin.
Could you hold on just a moment? If you could let them know, we'll open the phone line here in a few minutes.
City council meeting.
Hi, I was hoping to make a public, uh, statement when it comes open again.
Okay, can you call after the mayor opens it?
Oh, I thought you did.
It's, no, it's open to those that are in attendance.
Oh, okay.
Thank you, we'll open the phone line. Okay, thank you.
All right. If you'd state your name.
My name is Robin Curtis. Um, I am speaking for Field Three. Um, I've lived here and grown up my entire life here playing softball, uh, through Parks and Rec. I have currently coached for, uh, the girls softball, which is 10U. Um, and being an assistant on their team also, as well as assisting Mr. Owens for 14U as well. Both my girls play on both teams. Um, growing up, all we had was Bravo Fields, um, through Parks and Rec, through the high school, and at this point, Field Three is needed. Like they both have stated, there's no other field that we realistically can use. If we take away this field, we are basically forcing every kid, not only in what we currently have for softball, but all the kids that are going to be coming up. The Parks and Rec's department, um, does not have a program past sixth grade for these girls for softball. At this point, we are forced to go over the hill to play in a Henderson League. However, all those girls are Boulder City residents. Go to school here, live here, or one, at least one of their parents live here. So, taking this away, we are now going to be also shorthanding to what we can bring in from Henderson, whether Henderson allows for tournaments or games to start coming into Boulder City and use that field, or even for Vegas teams. Um, not so much either on a Little League side, whether a softball program goes through Little League, or whether the girls are playing in HGSA over the hill. But this is all we have. So, and I love dogs and I love a park, but there are so many other grass areas in this city that can be considered. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Yes, ma'am. Again, please state your name.
I'm Emily Spragna with Boulder City Little League. I am the Boulder City Little League Vice President, and I'm here tonight to express my concern with converting Veterans Field Three from a beautiful softball field to a, and a convertible baseball field into a dog park. Not only is it a softball field, it is the only field in town that can be converted using the three anchor, three base anchor points. You can use it as 60s, 70s, and 90s, as Chris Shea touched on yesterday. We currently, is not being used for softball. We have our All-Star Boys out there tonight because Parks and Rec have our, have Fields One and Four tonight for their programming. So our All-Star Boys are practicing on Field Three as well tonight. So, taking into consideration what happens next year when it's a dog park, where will our All-Star Boys be playing? As we know, Boulder City Little League has been very competitive in the past in juniors, All-Stars. One state, one got to regionals a few times. So, the fact that there's four fields for us to use, and you guys want to take a whole one away is just, it's absolutely ridiculous. And I know you guys didn't understand all the information at the time, but it's very, all the information was very skewed. The Facebook post that went out yesterday was absolutely absurd, like absurd. The fact that it says at one point in the past decade, Field Three was a dog park is false. It was a softball field that was not being used because we weren't allowed to have softball. Katie has fought, and we all have fought, to bring softball to Boulder City. We fought Roger Hall, we fought Kelly Lair to have softball because in their gentleman's agreement, we weren't allowed to have softball from 20 years ago. Well, there's no record of this gentleman's agreement. So we were finally allowed to have softball, and we were allowed to use the softball field. So it was never a dog field to begin with. Also, the Facebook post says that Hemingway and Bravo are viable options, but it doesn't take into consideration that our organization, which is a volunteer nonprofit organization, has to prep, re, and restore the fields after using them every night. Using a field that is not at Vets would mean that we would have to provide a new piece of equipment such as a drag or, or a golf cart, or a ATV of some sort to drag the fields, a drag, rakes, somewhere to store the equipment, like a Conex box, as well as renting a dumpster for trash at that facility, because we already rent one for a crazy amount of money for the facility at Vets. Because the city does not allow us, or the city does not allow us to use their storage facilities or their equipment for Little League. Um, I just think there's so many other grass areas in town that could be used, and please don't take Field Three. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? All right. Seeing no one else in chambers, then we will open up the phone line now. Anyone wishing to call, the number is 702-589-9629. Again, this is our final public comment period for city council meeting. The phone number, 702-589-9629.
Hi, I'm, I'm on the line.
Okay, go ahead. State your name.
Uh, hi. Hi, my name is James Croccalici. I'm a resident. Um, I'm a parent. Um, I'm also a coach for Boulder City Little League. Uh, but I'm also a supervisor at, uh, a claims team for a, uh, commercial insurance care. I don't think that you have thought through the liability implications of putting a dog park next to fields where projectiles fall out of the sky. Has anyone even stopped to think what it is, uh, having foul balls fall on someone's head, especially the senior citizens in this community? What happens if someone's dog is injured when a foul ball gets hit there? Because Field Two is used by 13, 14, and 15-year-olds. They hit foul balls inadvertently onto Field Three all of the time, whether we are having practice or games. Has anyone even taken into consideration what that does to your risk management at all? This was a half-cocked idea. I understand that they want a dog park, but I do not think you even took that into account with you are actually putting, the liability you are putting on the city. There are so many other places where things cannot hit people, um, you know, inadvertently. Um, I think that you really need to revisit this issue. I think that you really haven't thought through it. They gave you a proposal. I went back and I watched that meeting. They gave you the proposal, and it was instantaneous. Only one person, one per council member, had any reservations. I understand the concern of putting it by the skate park. I understand that the dogs can get scared by the sound of wheels. Well, you know what's scary? All of the commotion that goes on on game days. You know what's also scary? Baseball hitting people in the head. That's my time. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Uh, the phone line is available. Anyone else wishing to call in? The phone number, 702-589-9629.
Yes, I have a public comment, please.
Go ahead.
A good evening, council. For the record, Fred Volt. While repurposing underutilized public facilities represents wise action in delivering value to this community, the incredible snafu that has emerged from poor research and poor information regarding the proposed new dog park imprudently carved out of Field Number Three at Veterans Memorial Park deserves attention tonight. For a group of parents and their children to pick at City Hall yesterday shows that when sufficiently moved by an issue that impacts them personally, this community can rally to effect change. Perhaps the most shocking component of this whole situation is the bad information provided by the Parks and Recreation Department regarding field usage, which should have been accurately tracked in their statistics. Additionally, department management failed to talk to the local groups who periodically rent these baseball fields in order to find out their future plans before recommending a reallocation of Field Number Three. It is not as if there were no alternatives. Several months ago, when other options such as Oasis and Hemingway Parks were in the consideration mix, this council and city staff were given another alternative, converting underutilized and ignored ABC Park into a fenced dog park. This much more centrally located facility contains mature shade trees, lush grass, several derelict buildings, and restrooms, and adequate parking. It is a better venue by far than a shadeless baseball field. Not a scintilla of consideration was given to this obvious alternative requiring the planting of no new grass and making a largely ignored city facility into a vibrant part of the community's amenities. This is a classic example of city staff ignoring ideas brought forward by the public and adopting an imperious attitude that they know best and the public they are to serve and whose money pays their salaries and benefits should sit down and be quiet. Let's also be clear about a related issue. A new dog park is not a condition precedent for implementing a citywide leash law. So, so long needed to quell the hundreds of avoidable incidents each year caused by dogs that are not on leashes, revert to instinctive behavior, and cause problems. The very small group of people who think they have unfettered imaginary rights to allow their dogs off-leash whenever and wherever they choose, unconcerned with the consequences of such recklessness, are acting with little consideration for the rest of this community. The present unenforceable ordinance leaves Boulder City as an out-of-touch outlier on this subject compared to every other incorporated city in Clark County, as well as most of the United States, where leash laws are regularly in place to protect the human and animal populations of communities. We need an enforceable and meaningful leash law now, not pushed off to an indefinite future where the hope is people will forget about the need for one. People and their companion pets, especially seniors who may not be able to effectively respond to such unexpected attacks and threats, should not live in fear of being accosted or attacked by an off-leash dog. We need action, not specious rationalizations and coddling of people who don't wish to act responsibly. And I would ask that these comments be added verbatim to the meeting record tonight. Thank you.
Thank you. Phone line's again available. Anyone wishing to call in? Those are the final public comment period. This is the final public comment period for City Council meeting. Anyone wishing to call, the number is 702-589-9629.
Yeah, this is Matt Reagan calling about the, well, it's more about the hangars, but I wanted to comment. I have to take issue with all the testimony that is coming from the City Council and the council members. I think council members should be, what I would suggest, is simply don't, don't offer their opinions when clearly they are, have a really a lack of understanding. One is, council, and I'll give you an example. Councilwoman Bridges stated that we paid 23 cents a square foot. I've owned two hangars there for about six years. I never have paid close to 23 cents a square foot. So, I just wanted to throw that one out as a very good example of clearly, and you see it time and time again, and it's not just about the hangars, is that council people, council members are offering way too much opinion and testimony because they want to drive their own agenda. And they need to just hold back their own agenda and actually sit there and listen to their constituents. And perhaps they, we constituents would be better represented. Thank you.
Thank you. The phone line is now available. Anyone wishing to call, number is 702-589-9629. Madam City Clerk, were there emails received for the final public comment?
Yes, I received two written public comments, but one of them, the person spoke in person. So I'll read the second one.
Thank you.
Submitted by Carrie Keaton. "I truly believe that taking away the softball field at Vets is a horrible idea. My husband, Michael, is a softball coach and has been since 2019 here in Boulder City, when he started coaching our older daughter, and now our younger daughter has started to play through the rec league this year, which he is also coaching. We love this community and truly want what's best for our kids. I am not opposed to a grass dog park, but not at the expense of the sports that my daughter loves. My personal reasons why this isn't a good solution. There are two fields at Hemingway, but it's not safe for kids. Kids ride their bikes to practice and games. The highway is way too dangerous to be crossing or riding along. Two, there is a retainer wall that's not safe. Siblings will be playing on it, falling off, getting injured. Three, parents that have boys and girls playing at the same time will have to choose between fields to be at, instead of just walking between fields at Vets and catching both teams. I've seen this many times. The rec center uses those fields four nights a week for adult play. There's already a huge scheduling problem now. It will get worse when we are down a field. Bravo Fields, high school team plays there. They have just as many rights to play at that field as our girls have to play on Field Three. High school softball should not have to try and schedule their field time. Softball has been, being built up in the city for the last few years. Our high school team just went to state. A large number of girls played softball in Henderson as a kid because there wasn't an option here in Boulder City. We should be coming alongside girls and supporting them in their sports, not discouraging. My husband coaches both spring and fall seasons, as well as other coaches do. They use the field approximately seven months out of the year, until my acknowledgement during those seasons, it could be used at least four or five times a week. Thank you for your time in regard to this matter."
Thank you. Anyone else still in chambers that would like to speak in the final public comment period?
May I say something, one other, just to add a?
No, sir. You've had an opportunity to speak. Thank you.
All right. I'll be here next time.
Anyone else? All right, we will close our final public comment period and move to our last item, council reports. Councilmember Bridges?
The only report is, as usual, the residents of Boulder City who find themselves in need of assistance for rent or utilities or food. Can contact emergency aid at Boulder City, make an appointment, and get the assistance that they need. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Jorgensen?
Nothing to report.
Thank you. Councilmember Fox?
Nothing to report.
Thank you. Councilmember Adams?
Thank you. Southern Nevada Water Authority held its regular meeting last Thursday. Of course, we approved the budget, just like about everybody else is doing right now. But I think more importantly was a resolution that was passed that would limit the maximum amount of water that would be allowed to be used at a golf course by about 30%. Of course, SNWA is not an enforcement agency. They don't have any tools of enforcement themselves, but that means it will be incumbent upon each of the municipalities, of course, Boulder City, to work towards that goal. It is just another measure that we have taken. There are several more measures coming down the pipeline, as it were. So, again, this is just the beginning of many cuts that need to be made to make sure that we have a sustainable water supply here so that we can continue to prosper. This Thursday will be a Southern Nevada Health District meeting that I'll be attending. During my briefings, it was discussed that while we are seeing a increase in cases for COVID right now, we are at least not seeing any spike in that our hospitals do remain capable of handling the load that they are seeing. A matter that we will be discussing, there will be increasing consideration for increasing environmental health fees, which have not been increased since 2009. So, something that we are looking at because we are, the Health District, Environmental Health Department is not able to keep up with the many needs that it has to provide for the services it has to provide. Because, just like everything, costs have gone up for everyone, and they have not seen really an adjustment in how they receive their funding in, you know, since, again, since 2009. So, something we are looking at.
Thank you. I was at a memorial service last Saturday for a gentleman who had been with St. Jude's Ranch, Brian Franklin. I just wanted to make note of the service that he had to this community. He was there at St. Jude's for nearly 16 years. There were many children that were improved by his life as he took care of them, took them in, gave them guidance, and gave them a home. Every report I've heard is, he will be a great loss here in Boulder City. Another loss, not permanent, will be Celia Short Goodyear, our reporter with the Boulder City Review, will be leaving us. We wish her well. And this weekend, as we started this meeting out some four hours ago, was noted in public announcements, it is Memorial Day this weekend. I know that for many of us, that's a holiday, but it is a time to honor those who have sacrificed their lives for this country. So, you know, enjoy yourself, have a safe weekend, but please give a thought to those who have given their lives for what we have here. Thank you, and we are adjourned.